Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for today's monthly board meeting. Before we begin, I just want to give a shout out to the communication slides that are rolling, and hopefully the community that's joining us virtually is able to join, to enjoy those. And thank you so much, Karen Black, for putting that together. That's a great way to spotlight some of the great work that's happening in the district. So just wanted to give you a little shine for that. We will now call, we will now call the February 7th, 2022 Board Meeting to order. Mr. Gaither, will you please call the roll?
Representing Educational District 1, Ms. Katie Howard.
Present.
Representing Educational District 2 and Board Vice Chair, Ms. Aretha Baldwin.
Present.
Representing Educational District 3, Ms. Michelle Limbiades. Representing Educational District 4, Ms. Jennifer McDonald.
Present.
Representing Educational District 5, Ms. Erica Mitchell. Representing Educational District 6 and Board Chair, Ms. Ishay Collins.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat 7, Ms. Tamara Jones.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat 8, Ms. Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat 9, Mr. Jason Estevas.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the organizational meeting on Monday, January 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Jen McDonald, second by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would, thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January Board Meeting.
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown, second by Jason Estevas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the February 7th Board Meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown and second by Aretha Baldwin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Heron, will you please bring the work, today's work session items?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to you. Good afternoon to our board. We have four presentations today. First, Larry Hoskins, Chief Operations Officer, Chief of Police, Mr. Ronald Applin, and Mr. Orlando Torres, Director of Account Management at Vera Mobility, will give a presentation on the Georgia School Zone Speed and Safety Camera Program. Following Mr. Hopkins, Chief Applin and Mr. Torres, Joy Hunter, Executive Director of Partnerships and Development, will give a board member requested presentation on APS Partnerships. Following Mrs. Hunter, Lisa Bracken, Chief Financial Officer, will present the monthly financial update. Erica Long, Senior Advisor for Policy and Government Affairs, will join her to provide a brief update on the current session of the state legislature. Finally, following Ms. Bracken, Dr. Katika Lovett, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, will present the COVID-19 Public Health Data Update. Mr. Hoskins, Chief Applin, and Mr. Torres, we are ready for your presentation on the Georgia School Zone Speed and Safety Camera Program, Item 2.1. The floor is yours at this time, Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice, Member of the Board, excuse me, Members of the Board, Madam Superintendent, good afternoon. Prior to starting the presentation, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you all to the members, partner members of this effort that have been extremely instrumental and will continue to be extremely instrumental in the facilitation of the Georgia School Zones Speed and Safety Camera Program. So the first person I'd like to introduce is LaShonda Butler Burks, current Chief, Deputy Chief Operating Officer for the City of Atlanta and former school board member and chair.
Yes.
Butler Burks.
Good to see you. Good to be inside.
And I also would like to introduce Major Watson, who is major with the Atlanta Police Department, that's actually representing Deputy Chief Celeste Murphy of the Atlanta Police Department. Deputy Chief Murphy couldn't make it today, but Major Watson is filling in, in her stead. And I also would like to introduce, who has already been introduced as a presenter today, Mr. Orlando Torres, our partner from Vera Mobility. Mr. Torres, here, okay. All right. So at this time, I will turn the presentation over to our Chief of Police, Mr. Ron Applin, and Mr. Orlando Torres.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce the School Zone Speed and Safety Camera Program to you. We're gonna take a few moments to provide some information about the program. One of the things that we want to take away from this presentation is, we want to create safe environments for our students and communities. At the end of the day, that's our goal, to make our, make our schools safe, secure, and strong. Is it, is it? Okay. Point somewhere. Okay, next slide, please. As discussed earlier, this is a three-way partnership between Atlanta Public Schools, the City of Atlanta, specifically the Police Department, and Atlanta Planning Department, and also Vera Mobility. As you recall, we do have the school bus stop, school bus stop program that's already in place, and we have that partnership already in place with Atlanta, APS, and Vera Mobility. So we do have a good foundation to work from when we, when we talk about moving forward this program. Next. When you think about school zone camera programs in Georgia, there are several counties and cities currently deploying these particular devices right now. I've had an opportunity to share, to have conversations with different jurisdictions about their program and how it's going, and it's been very effective, very effective in reducing the speed in school zones, and which, of course, as we explain a little bit later, translates to safer school zones for our kids, at the end of the day. All right, Mr. Torres. Next, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Orlando Torres with Vera Mobility, and it's a pleasure to speak to you all this afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to continue this great safety partnership and your commitment to safety for the kids. So there's significant value to the community, and as you can see in some of these slides that you see here, these are, these are statistics nationally of the different speeds and how they affect the community and what it can do to someone that's injured or hit by a vehicle. Next slide, please. Significant value to the community is, it's, you see that they drive more safely, not only in the areas where their school speed zone cameras are already up, but just in general. When they start seeing that there's enforcement, when they start seeing that there's, there's technology to help enforce those safety rules, you see improvement everywhere. It allows, by the slower speeds allows them to stop a little bit more quickly, avoiding striking a pedestrian, and the slower speed just means more safety for everyone involved, not only for the kids, but there's a lot of activity, parents and different people going in and out of those schools as well. Next slide. This is just a high level of some of the key points for the legislation that was passed in April of 2018. It basically mirrors the Stop Arm Program that you already do, and somehow that's enforced. It's only, only liability, it's only a civil penalty. The first violation for speed enforcement is $75. The registered owner of the vehicle that gets more than one would be, would be charged, or the fee would be at $125. There's the warning and the signage that we do and provide for the program. There's importance to calibration of the technology. It's basically the same LiDAR technology that's used by law enforcement to do speed enforcement. This is just simply applied to a fixed camera and the technology that goes in there. We have a calibration that the camera does every 30 days on a report that's provided. Then there's an annual calibration, just like the police have for their LiDAR equipment. One of the great things that they've done in Georgia, and I was telling the chief, is that the money that's collected is put back into public safety and law enforcement. And I think that's a great idea to be able to continue to enhance, not only what you've already done, but what you want to do moving forward. It's adjudicated locally, and the use of the cameras really, it's two opportunities. When most of the traffic and the violations are happening, one hour before school and one hour after school. The way that the statute is written, the violator has to be going at least 11 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, and they become eligible for a violation. And we'll see in a minute how the cameras work, but it doesn't trigger until 11 miles an hour. And then as you guys continue to work together with APS and with the city to select the sites, DOT does the final approval of the actual G dot permit for us to start building the systems. Next slide. The, the effort here is to be able to provide the automated speed enforcement, which is a safer way to enforce traffic laws, not only for the people that are in those speed zones, but even for your officers that are put in danger themselves whenever they do a traffic stop. It also had some investigative tools that are great because it allows you to have actual live streaming video from these cameras. And in today's crazy world, to have, be able to have law enforcement open up a camera and look at what's actually going on at that school zone is really a great advantage beyond just the violation. Next. It's a fixed-based technology. It's a 3D tracking radar that tracks up to 32 vehicles at a time through that zone. So whenever you get the complaints and you put a, a police detail to go out there and do this, they're gonna catch probably 10 to 15% of the actual violators. The systems work nonstop, tracking 32 vehicles and captures everyone that's going over the posted speed limit at 11 miles. We take the information, we create an evidence package that goes to the Police Department, APD, and they ultimately make the decision on issuing a violation or not. Next. Just real quick how it works, if you see some of the different images there, image one is when the vehicle enters the speed zone, and the system detects that that vehicle's going at least 11 miles over the speed limit, it triggers a violation event. It does a time over distance, and that's that second image that you see there, and that triggers again the closing of that, that violation event. Then what it does, it takes, it crops the license plate of that vehicle. We take the ROV information and match it, we put together an evidence package for the Police Department and the officers, it goes to them just like we do for the Stop Arm Program, and the officer ultimately will make that final decision on whether or not that's a violation or not. Again, it's the officers that do it, we just simply collect the data. Next. One of the benefits I mentioned earlier, the historical retrieval data and live streaming. God forbid there's a need to look at that school zone for a particular reason, officers can go right into the system themselves, look at live streaming video. If there's an investigation that's ongoing, the system will hold video for 30 days to allow the Police Department to do their job and investigate whatever situation there may be. So value well beyond just the violation itself. Next. Just a quick overview of the end-to-end solution. We handle the heavy lift all the way through. We want to make this as seamless as we've made it for your Stop Arm Program, it's been a great success, but ultimately the, the event is captured, as I showed you in the, in the slide earlier. We secure the data, provide law enforcement to pack it, we provide the packet to the law enforcement, we issue, when the officer issues it, we do the mailings, we collect all the payments, and we provide those to the program, and then we do a very heavy public outreach education campaign, before, during, and as often as you need for the program. Public education and awareness is an extremely important part of the success. Next. Just real quick, some of these we've kind of run through already, but where you're at right now is we are working with different departments with the city to put together the business rules, build the backend solution that handles most of the software work that happens, and then just before the program goes live, there's a 30-day warning period per statute. In that 30-day warning period, and well before that, we'll put together, we'll partner with you and with the city, put together a public outreach and education campaign to make sure the public is aware of what's coming, why you're doing it, and the value to it. Next. This is just a quick example of what the violation would get and be able to go online if they get a violation. They go online and they have these options in the website on how to resolve that violation. There are FAQs on there, there's why you do the program on there, so on and so forth, but it allows them to take care of everything online or calling the 800 number that we provide. Next.
We think about how the cameras will be, placement will be determined, at the end of the day, empirical data is gonna drive this whole decision-making process. Would we like to have them at every school? Yes. Is it something we can do right away? Unfortunately, not. There are a lot of things in place that need, a lot of things need to take place in order to make that happen, but empirical data is gonna drive this. But we're also gonna take into consideration what we, what information, the information we're getting from the public, from the community, information we're getting from schools. We'll talk to officers with both with Atlanta Police, Atlanta Public Schools Police, to determine if there are hotspots at certain places that we need to think about. And of course, the input from the City of Atlanta and the City of Atlanta Police Department. The traffic studies that are performed by Vera Mobility is, that's where we, we're gonna get our empirical data, that's gonna drive, again, a lot of the decision-making with that. Per the agreement between APS and City of Atlanta, both organizations can recommend location, all right? Both organizations can do that. But we both have to approve it, but we're not gonna withhold their approval for camera placements, vice versa, with Atlanta, with the City of Atlanta. Next slide. This is a sample traffic study done by Vera Mobility?
So yeah, this is a sample of, of some of the traffic studies that were conducted, and it's really a, a real data study. There's basically strips that are put in the ground for three days, and this is capture of three days of vehicles that are captured going over the posted speed limit at least by 11 miles an hour. So the information and the, and the schools that you may select will be based on actual data and where you have the biggest concerns for safety, which is what you're all committed to, and, and this will give you those real samples to work from. And as was talked about earlier, a phased approach to add more systems and more schools into the future.
Next slide. Next slide, please. Talking about next steps?
So we've already completed the step one, which was the contract, and again, I thank you for the opportunity to add another safety solution as part of what we've been doing for the last six or seven years with Stop Arm Cameras. Step two is the interoperable agreement that you've done, as you did before with the City of Atlanta for the operations of the program, and right now we're in that step three, which is the progress, the next progress of selecting the site. Really, we're at the point where, once you all decide, these are the schools, this is where it makes the most sense, how do I address the immediate concern over some of the safety locations that we mentioned, then we get to work. And again, we do the lift on that. We prepare all the documentation, we work to get the G dot permits with you, we make sure, we, we've already started meetings with the city and ADOT to start that progress going. So as soon as we have those sites, we're ready to begin the journey for speed cameras. As far as public relations, to me, this has been something that has worked extremely well everywhere we've done it. We work, we do this across the country. We've got almost 3,000 speed camera around the country with some major metropolitan areas like yourself, Washington, New York City, LA and California. So this is a very important part, that we will help build that message for you. We will do the lift on that. We've already started working with Letitia on your side of the, of the table as far as the public outreach and education, and there's already plans on when this stuff starts, because we're not gonna wait until the very warning period actually starts. But this is something that we will do at the beginning, before, during, and after, as you may see need for that. Next slide.
All right. Next step in the community awareness calendar. We, we are in the process of determining, well, we, we're in the process of determining the initial 10 sites. And once we make that determination, we'll notify the City of Atlanta. The City of Atlanta will be given an opportunity to consider the first 10 sites. Again, we want to do this in batches of 10, and part of the reason why is because if we, if we want, we, our desire is to do it at every school, at the end of the day, if that's what we could do, right? But we can't do them all at once because it'll basically put, put so much work on the City of Atlanta that they may not be able to keep up with the amount of work that they have to deal with. So we want to do a phased approach and give us an opportunity to go back and take a look at any challenges we may have had in the first 10, we can make some adjustments as we move forward. The initial awareness phase one, we'll, we'll do some, some, some community outreach or community awareness through news outlets, website development, things we're working on right now, press release, social media, try to get as much out to the public as possible to let everyone know what we're doing. We, we hope to wrap this up in March and February, but in March, we should be, we should have a notice to proceed paperwork for the initial sites forwarded to Vera Mobility. That gives them the authority to go ahead and start the work, the actual work. Their position on, once they get the notice to proceed, they're looking at a 90 to 120 day build out from that point. So from, from the point they get the notice to proceed, about 90 to 120 days before the site is up and running. By April and May, we'll review the input from the community, of course. Vera Mobility will conduct additional speed zone studies where needed. APS will, will actually determine the second set of 10 sites, and we'll move on from there. But by June or July, we would expect that the equipment to be installed by Vera Mobility and approved. Vera Mobility will, will operationalize the school speed zone cameras, we'll give a, there'll be a 30-day warning period, so once the, the site is up and running, we don't just start ticketing people right away, there'll be a 30-day warning period. So during that 30-day warning period, we'll notify drivers that, you know, this is what happened in this zone, so they know ahead of time that, that it is active and it's something that we are paying attention to. But then after those 30 days, we actually start to go live. And we also, also, again, it's all about community awareness, making sure we communicate with the public about what we're doing, why we're doing, and how we're doing. Next. Are there any questions?
Cynthia, Tamara, Jen, and then Katie. Got a question? And then Jason.
Thank you for this presentation, and I, I think this is a, a good next step after our Stop Arm Camera Program has been so successful. Because I'm going to ask a question about where the fines go and what happens to them for this program, can you remind us how the, the fines, the revenues generated from the Stop Arm Camera Program are dispersed? Who gets those?
The fines from the Stop Arm Camera, a portion of those revenues go to Vera Mobility, a portion goes to the City of Atlanta for their administrative, additional police officers, those sorts of things, and a portion comes to Atlanta Public Schools that is actually placed in a special revenue account. As was previously mentioned, the legislation that was passed requires the proceeds to go towards law enforcement or improve safety and, and security-related items. So we place those funds in a special revenue account, and when we need additional things from a safety and security standpoint, that's one of the revenue sources that we use.
Will the funds from this program be applied similarly?
Absolutely. Again, by, the, by legislation or by law, it, that's, that's what's required.
So we do get some of these funds that would continue to go into that special account?
Correct. And I believe I have the breakout for the funds. If I can find that. Um, there we go. So under the $75 or first offense ticket, it's $75, so the first $25 of both situations, the 75 or the 125 goes to Vera Mobility. And then 66%, in the case of $75, that would be a remaining $50. So 66% of that, which is, would equate to $33, will go to APD or the City of Atlanta, and 34% or $17 will come to APS. And under the $125 model, the same breakout, but instead of AP, APS receiving $17, it'll be $34, and for the City of Atlanta, $66.
And that's significant.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the, the funds would be distributed pretty much the same way. Will these cameras be placed and the program go live in conjunction with making sure that all our school zone signs are accurate? And I ask that because I know we, we have two kinds of signs essentially, one that says "school zone" and gives times, and in some cases, because of extended day or adjusting arrival and dismissal times, those times are no longer accurate. And also, we have signs which say "speed zone," "school speed zone in effect" when flashing, and many of those, as I travel across the city, I notice are notoriously inaccurate in that they flash at, you know, from 9 to 10 o'clock at night. There's one down the street from me that goes off at 9 o'clock every evening, when I'm pretty sure there are no children at the elementary school in question. So I think it would be important if we're depending on those signs to establish our school zones, to make sure that every one of those is accurate, and I know we don't have jurisdiction over those signs, but the, we need to make sure that the people who do, do that.
Absolutely.
And the third one is timing. It sounds like the cameras will be, the first cameras will be installed just about the time school lets out. So our 30-day trial period may end up being during the summer when school is not in session. Would it be wise to have that 30-day period begin the first day of school?
Remember, we have summer school in June. So depending on when they're actually completed and activated, certainly if we could utilize those during summer school, we will. But if, in fact, it's July, when we're ready to, when they're ready to go live, then I think that does make sense to maybe hold off and, and start that in late July or early August, when, you know, the start of the actual school year.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Tamara?
I have a couple of questions. Couple are really quick. For the hours, you know, is it from one hour before school starts all the way until one hour after school ends? Or it's not just brackets, but it's the whole time?
Yeah. I, I think that's one scenario that some schools deploy, and correct me when I'm wrong. What we have been discussing as an organization, and really haven't finalized yet, but we were thinking more one hour before the start of school to one hour after the start of school, and then one hour before the end of school to one hour after the end of school.
Okay, thank you. And then, just for clarification, I mean, this, these cameras are only gonna be used for speeding, correct?
That's certainly our purpose, but these cameras do record, and if there's a public records request, it certainly wouldn't come to APS because this is, this is a city, I guess for legal purposes, this is custodian, they would, just like our Stop Arm Camera Program, those requests for, for video would actually, constituents would have to do a public records request to the City of Atlanta.
Okay. And then the last one is, so it looks like, you know, we need to get to that notice to proceed time spot, and I hear you about, you know, we're trying to identify the first 10 sites, but, you know, is there a process? I mean, I know you said you're gonna be evaluating all these different criteria, and I was really impressed by that data collection slide that you had, you know, 16. Is that still going on? You know, because what, I mean, it jumps out at me, like Slater and Mays, you kind of jump out, I mean, is that kind of gonna lead the?
Yes. We, Vera has completed 38 of our schools, so we are in the process of looking at those and hoping to have that process completed by the end of this week and over to the City of Atlanta. As Chief Applin mentioned, we will lean very, you know, very, very heavily on the, the empirical data that, that comes from the studies, but also there's some empirical data within the district that we believe will help inform our decisions as well, and that's, you know, there's, there's certain schools that have large numbers of walkers, you know, to our schools, so those are other pieces of information that we will, you know, put in our rubric to, to try to figure out which schools should actually get them first. Because as Chief Applin indicated, we're, you know, our aim is to, to have these at as many of our schools as, as possible, it's just timing and when we can get all of our schools actually outfitted with these particular devices.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, Jen?
Hi. Great to see you all. Thank you for this information. Looking at Slide 12, just have some questions about the steps in the process. So you made a good point about your scale. So you made a good point about your scaling at 10 schools initially so that not to overwhelm, but will there be some kind of evaluation process on how quickly City of Atlanta is turning these around? Once you send these packages, right, these packages of information, what, how will you evaluate timeliness with them then mailing these citations out? Or is that a TBD?
The violation?
Yeah. Once you send it off, like what is it, what happens if it's 60 days later? Or does it matter? What's the timing? Or do you have like a target timeline in mind?
Yes, please.
So according to statute, we have to do the mail out of that violation on your behalf or on the city's behalf from the PD officer within 30 days.
Okay.
And then, and if it's outside the 30 days, then we don't process that. We put it in a separate basket for the PD to evaluate, but they're not going to be able to issue it. But we do that through the software to make sure nothing gets out there past the 30-day. Then they have 30 days to pay that, and then they have different options to pay that violation or contest it, or they can go online to the slide you saw where they can go online and actually look at the violation, make sure it's their car, all that kind of stuff in there. But the software manages that to make sure that nothing goes out past that 30-day window. The Stop Arm Program's been a huge success with that. The PD has done a wonderful job of always being timely with that, so I expect that'll continue with this program.
Sure. And in regards to people's ability to go online and pay, and I'm sure everyone does, but what happens to maybe the one person that doesn't pay? Is it treated just like any other ticket that you may not pay and how that's handled by the city?
It would be like a parking ticket. It's a civil penalty, so to look at a speed infraction, if you get pulled over at a traffic stop, it's going to be a lot more intrusive than this. This is a civil penalty, and there's consequences for that.
Okay. Okay. And the last question, just looking at step number seven under court support, just elaborate, help me from my own notification, understand what does that mean?
So what we do is, so eventually, some of these can be contested. So one of the options I have is a violator's, I want to contest it. I want to go before someone to magistrate to do this. So under that, we again provide an evidence package that the officer had already approved, and we provide that to the court so that the court solicitor, again, who we've worked with for many years, can present the case.
Okay, great.
And they have everything that's in the police record that we kept.
Okay, that makes sense. It's really something you're offering. It's not something that's available to the potential speeders.
No, no, no. It's strictly for the process here and actually the solicitor to be able to prosecute the case, and they have all the evidence and all the facts to do that in court.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Jen? Excuse me, sorry. Katie?
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, thank you, everyone at the City of Atlanta and APS who worked hard to make this happen. Great example of a city APS partnership, so thank you all. I have a question around, let's see, notice. In advance of the cameras going in, will the, actually, I know there's public notification, and I look forward to that one pager that we can share when we're out in the community talking with people about this program, but will signage actually be put up similar to advance of a stop sign being installed, something of that nature? Something that's really visible for people in the area?
Doesn't look like, it's not a part of the program. But one of the other things that, you know, some of the PR work and our PIO folks are working with the city and working with Vera that we're hoping to get in place is, you know, press releases between, you know, jointly between the mayor and the superintendent. One of the other things that we thought about was prior to these things going live in different communities, that we, you know, do outreach to the MPUs as well to inform them and ask them to help get the word out in the communities as well. But directly to the question that you asked, no, there is not flashing signs on the road that, you know, that basically say that we're, you know, in a warning period with the new Stop Arm or the School Zone Safety Program.
Okay, thank you for that. And again, they will not be activated during holidays, weekends, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then also, feedback. Like I got an email from someone asking if they would be installed on Boulevard, and I know you mentioned getting feedback from the community, and I clearly understand this is about objective, empirical, warranted analysis. That, thank you, ADOT for working on that. But how should people send that feedback in?
And as a part of our communication package, we're certainly going to take advantage of Let's Talk, the Let's Talk platform. On the website that's being specifically developed, as a matter of fact, I saw a mock-up of the website today, there will be a button on the website for folks to push and send an email directly to our emergency management coordinator, who will be the internal person responsible for the day-to-day, you know, management of the program. So there'll be on the website an opportunity for folks to, like I said, hit a button, send an email directly to him or to an account set up specifically for the school safety program, and he will be charged with making sure that he reads those emails, respond back to the community members, and mine those particular emails for information that can help us in the determination of camera placements.
Excellent. I look forward to learning more about that website and having that information. Lastly, the first 10, I know, again, we're looking at empirical data, but we're going to be doing it in equitable fashion throughout the city, correct? Or how will that, kind of the distribution? I know you don't know exact streets yet, but kind of spreading them out to start with? Is that part of the plan?
We're going to do our best, but, and that's certainly one of the, you know, one of the factors, equity is obviously one of the things that's high on our list. And we will do our best with that, but with empirical data, you know, it's really going to, we think, is going to tell us where the cameras need to be placed. But certainly, the equity piece is at the forefront of our mind. It's, you know, it's a filter that the City of Atlanta has expressed that's important to them. It's one that we've expressed to them that's important to us. So certainly, that filter will be at the very top of the rubric that we use.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the information.
So thank you, everyone involved in helping to put this together. I feel like I have a long history with both of these programs. I remember recently being elected and Ishay and I, I'm putting you in there, literally spoke to the mayor about, the mayor at the time, about the bus arm cameras that had been installed for months, about freeing that up. And then, once the legislature passed this legislation, pushing hard again to make it happen, and that was several years ago, here we are today, a couple of years ago, here we are today. Can you walk through, it's taken a lot of time, faster in other, been faster in other counties than in APS. What have been some of the challenges, the barriers that we've experienced here?
Yes, sir. During the actual procurement of the vendor for this particular project, our award was originally challenged by a competitor of Vera Mobility. So our legal and procurement department had to go through the process in order to satisfy the, the actual award, if you will. So that took a little bit of time. In addition, with the intergovernmental agreement, our legal department and the City of Atlanta had to, you know, to put together the contractual language. We got started, COVID hit, so that kind of, I think that slowed down the process. We finally got through that process, both myself and Ms. Lashonda Butler-Burks kind of joined the conversation. You know, we were able to agree on some things that, you know, our legal teams couldn't agree on, so we were able to get together and push that forward. And we finally got the language done, and the contract was actually executed by the superintendent and the mayor this past winter. But once we got it executed, went into the holiday season, so as soon as we came back off the holiday season this year, we got red back up, we got in touch with the City of Atlanta, we brought all the players to the table, the different departments from the city, the different departments from APS, to actually flowchart the different processes that needed to take place. And, you know, we got in touch with Vera, who was always in the background, you know, pushing and letting us know, you know, that they were, they were there to help in any way that they could, and they started doing things, kind of on parallel track, things that they could do, kind of absent the agreements and, you know, other information. So that, that's really what kind of took us, you know, those were the things that were few challenges and, you know, and things that kind of delayed the implementation within Atlanta Public Schools.
Did I hear you blame the lawyers?
I didn't blame, Nina's my best friend, but, you know, I didn't blame, I didn't blame the lawyers.
Sitting next to our lawyer with four lawyers on the board, and you blame the lawyers. Understood. So I appreciate that there's a timeline. I want to make sure that we stick to that timeline so that we can get this implemented as soon as possible. Says that APS is going to determine 10 initial sites. I think I just heard you say that that will happen within the next couple of weeks, next week?
The first 10, we're hoping to have done by the end of this week and over to the City of Atlanta. I actually met with my team today. Soon as we get those 10 done, we'll start looking at the next 10. Just a point of caution, we want to have the remaining studies done as soon as we possibly can, because there could be schools out there that haven't been studied that, you know, had we had the information, would be in, you know, maybe the second set of 10. So we're, you know, we're doing the best we can. We're trying to work parallel tracks where we can, but we do understand that how important this is, and, you know, we plan to have the next, you know, the next set of 10 over to the city, I would imagine, you know, 30 days, 45 days after the initial set of 10.
Okay. So based on that, when will those 10 be released to the community? And then, we get community input on those initial 10?
The initial 10 will be released as soon as, as soon as we get, as soon as the City of Atlanta approves the initial 10.
Okay.
So we don't want to, we don't want to put anything out to the city that may be in conflict with the final result.
Okay. So once, so I'm trying to understand the community input then. The community, the review of the community input will be done, has been going on or will go on?
Well, we've, you know, for the last couple of years, or actually longer than that, I've been here 13 years, and we get anecdotal information from, we've, you know, that's just an ongoing thing with the community about different areas and walk zones that are problematic. And we've tried to, as we're going through this initial set of 10, we're, you know, we're trying to fold that information into the decision-making. So that will be kind of the extent of the community's input for the first 10. And then going forward, we will have kind of a formalized data collection process with Let's Talk, the website that we have, the email that we have, that we will formally get information for the community, from the community, and certainly have that affect the second set, in subsequent tranches of 10.
And then how long, how long did it take for bus arm cameras to be complete? And how long does that compare to what we anticipate for this process?
Not sure I understand the question, sir.
So for the bus army cameras, we also started with a pilot program. I believe it was 10 routes or something like that. And we did that for a semester, and I think we expanded slowly after that. How long did it take to complete the program, to fully build it out? How does that compare to what we're doing here?
Boy, that was a few years ago.
Do you, you remember the details on that? Please.
So the actual program was already ongoing when I started, but there was an initial 10, and then they started expanding there. Probably one of the biggest differences to understand is that the school bus was a lot easier to control and a lot faster to turn around, because there is simply just put the cam, when the bus is available, put the camera on there. So by the time they did the complete full fleet install, it was about 18 months in total. And some of that was just debating and deciding what buses were going to have them, and we ended up putting the whole fleet. This is a little bit different in that there's permitting involved and there's construction involved, and therefore, that's why the turnaround. Once we have a permit in hand, we can turn those things around very quickly. So the process, as was mentioned, estimates, depending on any possible delays from the permitting process, 90 to 120 days. But once we have permits in hand, those things are up and running within 45 days. And that's why, again, this first phase and first step is so critical. Once that ball gets rolling, and now we've engaged with GDOT, with ADOT, and everybody that's involved, the next phases you bring on will be even a lot faster than that.
Okay. Thank you. One key piece of outreach for something like this is going to be MPUs. So I saw the slide, and I think a lot of that stuff is great for engagement, but I want to make sure that MPUs are not forgotten in the engagement piece, because this will definitely come up in those meetings, whether we're there or not. So I hope we have someone there to actually talk about it and introduce it versus it being like hearsay when it comes up. And then, two more things, and I'll be done. Did I read correctly, limited to 32 vehicles? Or is it 32 pictures of one vehicle?
It's, it could track 32 vehicles at one time.
At one time. Got it. But you could have many more violators than that? Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect. And then, this was related to, I think Tamara had a question that, where this came out. The license plate reader could be used for more than just this. I mean, APD can use it for, I mean, really in real time, close to real time, tracking criminal activity. You're acting like you don't want to say that part out loud, Larry.
No. I think you're, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
Absolutely right. I just, you know, I don't want to speak for APD. I don't know if they're going to use it for that purpose, but it...
It could be used for that.
It could be.
I mean, I think that's important to point out. Some people may be concerned about that. Not me. I think that that's a good thing, particularly with what happens in some, around some of our school sites. I see APD coming up, so they might have an answer.
Hello, that would be correct. Also, it could be used for, say, if there's a Levi's call, or if there's a situation where there's an active shooter, it can help us at a particular school. So it is a technologically advancement tool for us that we can utilize, and it's something that we can include in our video integration center as well, possibly. We just got to see how that connection's going to work, if it's compatible.
Thank you. So I think that's an important key piece that we should include in the communication around this program, because I do think it's important to have the safety around speeding and the danger that that has in our communities. But a key piece of this as well is the fact that we are adding cameras that can help identify criminal activity that's happening in our communities. And we know that in many of our communities... And we know that in many of our communities, a lot of this car traffic happens around schools. So I think it's a highlight that we should be providing to the community because it will help make our city safer as well, just from a criminal activity perspective. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jason? Erica?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It seemed like this was a long time coming for several reasons. I can recall a student in ninth grade walking to school and being hit by a car because someone was speeding in the school zone. And I think about that as you were going through the presentation because it happened to one of our students at Douglas High School. But unfortunately, that kid didn't survive the accident. So I look at this as an opportunity to, one, to keep our students safe. But I also had a question about the radius around the schools and the distance that these cameras would be located. Because we have neighborhoods and that students use to cut through and walk, and they have their own, like, walker route. Would that be included in the radius of the schools when we look at different neighborhoods and where the traffic of those students are coming from that are walkers?
I want to make sure I understand your question. Are there streets other than...
The main street where the school is.
The main streets.
Yes, like the radius of it, like...
Right.
You're going outside of just the school zone where the school is located, through the neighborhoods where there could be a high volume of students that walk to school with their regular neighborhood routes.
Yeah, I think this particular program is kind of specifically for the designated school zones. So more than likely, it will be the main thoroughfares or streets leading into the school, and perhaps not the, kind of the shortcuts or the backstreets that the children actually take to school. I would guess, kind of the backroads that are being taken and the paths are, you know, streets that are traveled a little less frequently by vehicles than the streets that are truly in, according to Department of Transportation, the actual school zone.
But can I give you a little example, like, Donnel Lee Hollowell? That's a very busy street.
Yes, it is.
You have John Lewis Invictus Academy, you have Woodson Park Kip, and then you go back down the street, you go to Douglas, right? That was one of the areas that that child I spoke about was hit and was killed. So they normally take those routes to get to school. So being that you have these three schools located in the kind of the same area, would the radius of those cameras expand? Because it's one, a busy road, you have two schools that are almost like diagonal from each other, but within, less than a mile. And then you have another school that's probably less than a mile down, which is the high school. So in that area, could the radius of where those cameras are located be expand just because you have a high volume of walkers that are taking that main road?
I don't know a whole lot about the technology, but in that particular situation where we have three schools that are literally on Donnel Lee, I would imagine there would be three stop-arm cameras on that particular, on Donnel Lee Hollowell, because there would be a school zone for each of those schools on Donnel Lee Hollowell. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then the other question I have, and maybe this is something for Nina, and it just crossed my mind, when we talk about sharing information in an intergovernment agreement between the city and the school district, is there a data sharing agreement? Because we are sharing a lot of different data, and the data could be used in different forms or fashion for whatever the city of Atlanta may see fit. So I just wanted to know, was that implemented in the intergovernmental agreement? And then also, the other question is, when we had the body cameras for our police officers, we had to provide a policy for that. Now, is that in the same case with the cameras, with this particular implementation for the safety zone cameras for the schools?
As far as the data sharing agreement, I don't believe there's one in place for this particular program because there's, we're not using specific student information with this particular program. So I don't believe there's a data sharing agreement tied to this particular agreement. I do know that with our collaboration with the Atlanta Police Department and our police department, there is a data sharing.
Yes.
There's some sort of agreement in place because of student information. Nina, do you have anything else to add to that?
I'll just echo the information on the data sharing agreement. This program doesn't require sharing any information regarding individual students or individual employees or any individuals at all, so those kinds of privacy protections aren't really necessary here.
Okay.
And in regards to the policy?
I'm going to have to look into that, but I can get back to you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other questions? Going once, going twice? Thank you so much, Larry and the team. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So thank you for that presentation. We're now ready for item 2.2, Board Member Requested Presentation, APS Partnerships. Mrs. Joy Hunter, our Executive Director of Partnerships and Development, will approach the podium now. Mrs. Hunter, we are ready for your Board Member Requested Presentation on APS Partnerships.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Herring, stakeholders and colleagues. I am pleased to present an update for the Office of Partnerships and Development as the new Executive Director. Today, I will provide an overview of our office, share more details about the services we provide across the district and to our partners and donors. I will then highlight the impact of our work during last year, and will conclude with a vision for how we can continue to provide financial and in-kind support for district and school efforts. As part of the overview of our office, I wanted to briefly elevate how our work fits into the larger focus for the Strategy and Engagement Team where we currently sit. As you will note, the Office of Strategy and Engagement leverages processes, relationships, capacity building efforts to ensure APS is creating a caring culture of equity, trust and collaboration. Thus, the Office of Partnerships and Development's contribution or focus on this collaboration is indeed partnerships, donor relations, Atlanta Partners for Education, and developing an overall strategic plan for funding. With that, you may be asking, how can I describe the Office of Partnerships and Development in five seconds? Essentially, our office is focused on fundraising and resourcing for strategic priorities in an effort to alleviate critical needs and gaps for students and schools. We do this through our key priorities centered around the district, schools and internal teams. At the core of these priorities are building relationships to leverage and maximize resources for all of these key groups which are in support of our student. In more detail, our office acts as relationship builders, consultants, collaborators, storytellers, matchmakers and a fiscal agent. I will elevate a few of these with specific examples during the rest of the presentation. I do, however, want to lift the description of storytellers because it is often overlooked. Many people who know me well understand how important shaping this narrative is for our work. In my previous role and this current role, I am responsible for crafting and sharing a narrative around APS or a specific school to invest other. It is an incredible responsibility and one that our office takes seriously. In many cases, our story is the one that the donor or partner will get, the only one, and thus we are authentic and intentional about how we show up as storytellers and rely on the true subject matter experts, for example, schools and teams to support us in this work. Part of the purpose of storytelling is to effectively connect partners with schools and clusters, and thus we show up as matchmakers. As matchmakers, we connect resources equitably to schools through several different ways, which are highlighted here, and I'll share a few. Through direct outreach from our office to principals, associate superintendents, program directors and other leaders across the district, again, relying on the subject matter experts for additional guidance. We did pilot the Partner Connect Tool for self-reporting of needs and outreach by participating partners. Approximately 30 partners register and 25% of schools had one school staff member participate in the training. We are now exploring ongoing investment in this strategy. We also bring school staff across clusters and potential partners together to collaborate on filling needs for partnerships. An excellent example of this is our Theo convenings with the Center for Equity and Social Justice. Let me say, we have seen some great success already with these convenings, working with our faith-based community to help provide resources to our schools. During our most recent convening held January 28th, our Center for Equity and Social Justice helped to capture some really crucial data and shared that 75% of Theo partners had been contacted, and this is from October through December of 2021, 71% of those Theo partners were connected with the school, and 81% of commitments met priority needs, which include volunteering, incentives, essential needs, winter gear and resources around human Another way we are connecting is something new that I am very excited about. We are looking to hold our first ever partnership summit to address these opportunities. Currently, we are holding the date of March 10 with more details to come. As an example of these partners and donors across the district, here you can see a snapshot of the key partners supporting this work across all clusters. In general, these partners provide the following services: food, clothing, mentoring, tutoring, outreach, serving as host to events, jobs, jobs training resources, staff incentives and computing enrichment programs. Specifically highlighting a few partners, I'll talk through several clusters and what their partners provide. Within the Carver Cluster, Goodyard has provided nutrition support and PPE. Within the Douglas Cluster, Chris 180 provides school-based mental health services. May's Cluster, Truist Bank provides financial literacy resources. And our Midtown Cluster, NCR, excuse me, partner with Walmart to provide holiday gifts and other supports to Hope Healed students and families. Additionally, you will see a QR code at the top of the slide. Please scan to view some additional cluster-specific partners who we honored at the APS Awards in November. These examples highlight the services that our partners generously provide in support of our students. On a broader scale, this slide represents examples of how we have been able to create strategic alliances through building relationships. This serves as a more robust list of both donors and partners who support several clusters and district initiatives like nutrition and technology. So from there, we can highlight what the impact of these donors and partners looked like last year. A few key examples to lift. We established our Get Our Kids Connected Program with Comcast and raised $2 million for devices and hotspots for students. We partnered with the Urban League of Greater Atlanta to launch Race to Read 2.0, a campaign to make Atlanta a city that reads, including securing over $2 million investment in Orton-Gillingham. Over $350,000 was raised in unrestricted funds distributed directly to schools between the ACP, which is Atlanta Committee for Progress, Adopt a School Program and Mercedes-Benz USA. We secured funding from the Annie E. Casey Foundation to anchor the Chief Equity and Social Justice Office position, and just in November, we partnered with Feat a Billion to distribute turkeys to over 450 families for the holiday. We also serve as fiscal agents. We effectively manage the APS Foundation, which is the Atlanta Partners for Education, and leverage this 501(c)(3) to attract support. We are exploring how to leverage the resources and relationships of board members in an effort to expand the impact of the foundation. For instance, due to the increase in monetary donations and high volume of investments in APFE over recent years, the board saw the need for enhanced controls, strategy governance and oversight. As such, in 2020, APFE launched a reorganization and rebranding effort. You can see the list of all APFE board members here, and I wanted to call out the APS representation to that board. APS Superintendent Dr. Lisa Herring, APS Board Chair Ishay Collins, and myself as APS Executive Director of Partnerships and Development. For some additional context, APFE Board of Directors are expected to be committed advocates for Atlanta Public Schools, excited communicators of the district's mission and vision, and key players in fundraising efforts, strategic directions, programs and grant making. And finally, APFE specifically works with Dr. Herring and APS representatives to determine special initiatives for fundraising. So how do we do this work exactly? Our approach to doing this work intentionally and effectively is to assess current support to determine the priority areas for immediate funding. We cultivate a core group of champions. I like to think that our stakeholders are indeed an extension of our team and office. Advance school capacity through fundraising workshops, grant application support, toolkit resources and cluster or school-level foundation support. Foster relationships across sectors to increase opportunities for essential funding support, and then build long-term sustainable funding across schools and clusters. So building on our approach, creating effective strategies will yield the following action. I'll highlight just a few. We want to assess a cluster-wide funding approach. We will continue to work with the Center for Equity and Social Justice to increase data collection from our schools and students around needs. Prioritize high-quality partnerships and ensure APS is represented at key events and meetings. Collaborate with region and city on large fundraising and coordinated initiatives for all students. Create innovative and diversified ways to increase revenue, particularly around alumni and individual giving. We'll also build fund- We'll also build funding for APS Five initiatives, ensuring resources are secure for all areas. And then lastly, we want to have an increased focus on raising unrestricted dollars to support schools. So after hearing all of this information, and you would like to contact us to get involved, see our information here. Please note, we are now a team of two and looking to expand our team quickly. For our potential stakeholders, if you're interested in partnering, you can scan the QR code and it will take you to our partnership's interest form. And as always, you can donate using the second QR code for all financial gift. As I, I'll leave that up just in case donations come in. As I conclude this presentation, I hope you see how our team's vision for this work truly centers around intentional collaboration. As the African proverb states, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." We are ready to go far to best serve the phenomenal students of APS. And with that, I thank you for the time and will happily answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Katie, Tamara, Jason, and Michelle.
First, thank you so much. This is awesome. Love partnerships, and you all are obviously doing a phenomenal job and look forward to supporting you all and watching it grow even further. I love seeing about the support for schools trying to create foundations and help with grant applications. I hear from a lot of parents who are trying to do that for their schools and just really need a lot of support. So is the best way for them to get that support is to reach directly out to you all or to you?
For particularly schools?
Right, like if it's a group of parents at a school that's trying to create a foundation at a school. Like how to get support and learning how to do that?
Yes, that's the best way. I will tell you that I have reached out to the Georgia Center for Nonprofits for additional help. I am not an expert in creating nonprofits, so they will actually help to facilitate conversations around how to best do that.
Acting them with resources.
Yes, absolutely.
Also, since it's Partnership with City of Atlanta Day, one of our greatest partners is obviously the city, and I was wondering how you all interface with them on a regular basis. I think Parks and Recreation is a great place to start. So whatever you'd love to share on that would be great.
I will probably have to ask Dr. Herring to step in a little bit as we're both setting up our teams at the city and also here at APS. We've had some conversations just in general how we will work together, but more specifically, we'll need to define that.
And I'm going to go ahead and tap into response to that as the administration has put leadership in place over the city. I interface directly with the mayor on a regular cadence. In addition to that, there have already been points of contact that have been identified within the city as it relates to bodies of work that are school-specific or it may be specific to each department. We stay committed to that regular cadence, and as it relates to expanded partnerships, that was a fair answer that Mrs. Hunter gave. In these first several weeks of Mayor Dickens' administration, we have, I believe we've communicated every week as we're identifying individuals and bringing them together and also trying to have some immediate small wins.
Thank you so much for that, and just knowing that we're all focused on youth and communities and how we can best leverage all our resources, like I saw information going out about City of Atlanta Parks and Recs doing track teams, and we have track teams, and sometimes we're missing coaches and how we work together on that and building an even stronger program. Lastly, the partnership summit on March tenth, is that something that even smaller organizations that are working in our communities with families and sometimes at schools, is that something they're welcome to attend, and if so, how do they find out more about it?
Yes, so I will be completely transparent. We are fleshing out the details. The primary focus is to have our partners come together to look at both summer school needs or after-school needs and then the summertime needs as well. And so as we kind of flesh out those details, we'll build the partner list and send more information out with registration sites and things like that.
And if I may also tag team on that one with Mrs. Hunter. So she is correct. We thought it was important to bring together all of our existing partners because we also have not had a chance to do that with the transition of this administration. So the other component of bringing all of our existing partners and potential together is to appreciate where they've stood in the gap over the course of this last year and a half. Our partners have been critically amazing to help us transition, not just this past summer, but throughout the entire transition of navigating through the pandemic and pivoting out of it. We want to appreciate them in that space. But we also want to introduce the primary initiatives and body of work that we have immediately started to do, whether that's Student Outcomes-Focused Governance, APS Five, et cetera. We believe that it's a helpful, the necessary opportunity to engage our partners. I would also say to Mrs. Hunter's presentation, that last slide that says, "Contact the department if there are potential partners out there who we may not have already had an existing relationship with, but they're interested," that would be the most ideal way to get that communication throughout. So I wanted to just compliment what we've spoken to around the vision of bringing partners together.
Wonderful. Thank you both so much. Thank you for all the work.
Tamara?
Yes, thank you so much. It's really good to kind of see all of this, you know, in one presentation because I know that our partners are such a big part of what makes this happen. Just wanted to piggyback off of what Board Member Howard was saying and, you know, thank the Dr. Herring and her administration and the City of Atlanta for making the end of APS swim season happen by allowing us access to their auditoriums. I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope this is the sign of lots of things to come. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have three questions. I appreciate very much the note that, you know, you're going to increase data collection because it really, I mean, the schools and the clusters' needs should be leading, you know, in the focus as opposed to, you know, just whatever, you know, a partner seems to think they want to bring to us. So I'm interested, and I know you're just on the job for a minute, you know, I'm interested in what that process will be. I know you mentioned the Center for Equity and Social Justice, but how are we using the other entities and structures that we have, including the GO teams and the Cluster Advisory Teams and the Principals? And also, in anticipation of that partner summit, do we have a current list of needs that they can review when they get there? So that's the first question.
Yes, and so I won't pretend to be the expert on some of the work that the Center for Equity and Social Justice is doing, but part of the way they will collect some of the data is through our Opportunity Index. And I do think Dr. Baker Jones is here. If you want some more information on that, that would be helpful. But that will be the data piece, what determines of how essentially we prioritize our work. And so I will give an example during the Theo convening in October. We did some of that data collection, and I was able to use that in January to determine, oh, excuse me, the top needs for our students. And across the clusters, top five, they were the same. And so that, we will use that same kind of profile and platform to elevate what those needs are.
Is that published, like the?
I don't believe it is.
What those needs are?
Yes, I, we have that information, and so we can definitely share.
Yeah, I think it would be good for the public to know, especially, you know, parents and teachers and everybody at schools to know, you know, and so that they can nod their head and say, yes, that's absolutely what we need. Or they could say, actually, we need, you know, you know, this thing over here.
And I will speak to that. Part of that will also determine the cadence that we collect this data. I will say this was around the holiday times, and so we want to make sure if needs shift, we are also capturing that data as well.
Okay. My second question is about the APS Foundation, and I appreciate the reboot. And, you know, because one of my questions is about the strategy, you know, when it comes to that foundation. You know, you mentioned Student Outcomes-Focused Governance, and, you know, is it, are we leading with student outcomes with a strategy for that? You know, is it outlined somewhere for people to go look at what the overall strategy is? How does it dovetail with our district's strategic plan? Is there strategy in response to data that we've been collecting? And how is the impact measured? So I think just getting a better sense of, and if it's published somewhere, and I just, I'm new too. You know, just let me know, but it would be really good to see that all of those things are working together. And, you know, because a lot of times it does seem like that is kind of happening off on the side.
I can speak to that a little. That is also a part of the reorganization. Essentially, APFE has served as a pass-through organization, and so part of this revamping or rebranding is to be more strategic around the priorities. And so it is not published, but it is more to come around what we can do and leverage for the foundation board.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is similar to that one. You mentioned how it's a pass-through. It has been historically. So am I correct that the Center for Equity and Social Justice is funded by our partners? Am I wrong about that?
Let me speak to that. Thank you. So, no, the Center for Equity and Social Justice, as its overall department or division, is funded by APS, but we did have, and we are very thankful for, support, financial support specifically towards the establishment of the position of Chief Equity and Social Justice Officer. So we had two entities that were critical in helping us do that primarily because of their commitment to our work towards equity and their desire to invest. Annie E. Casey Foundation, as well as Redefine Ed. They have, but that is not in totality the cost of our operational budget. We repurposed our operational budget through general operating funds. Lisa here, I want to make sure I said that correctly. In addition to, I did, in addition to the supporting cost towards the salary, actually, for the first several years of our Chief Equity and Social Justice Officer.
So it was just a boost?
Yes, ma'am.
That's fantastic. Okay. Yep, so I think that's it.
Thanks.
Anyone? Oh, Jason?
I just wanted to thank you and your team for all that y'all do. Y'all are extremely responsive every time that I've reached out with a partnership idea. And people often reach out to board members with things that they want to do, and I always flip that right over to you, and you do a great job of connecting with those people. And they always report that there's actually concrete steps that they can take to make that a reality on behalf of our students. So thank you. Thank you to the office for your team in helping our students. And I obviously encourage all board members, but also community members who may be listening to this, wanting to have their organization or company partner with Atlanta Public Schools to certainly reach out to your office. And I think it's also important to state that partnerships mean, or typically mean, that they're free. It's not like a sales pitch that would not be a partnership offer, that would be run by your office.
Right.
Right? So I just wanted to highlight that, both for board members but also for our community, that your office is an extremely responsive resource that has been incredibly helpful.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Michelle?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm so excited to hear that the foundation is moving in more of a strategic direction. There's certainly nothing wrong with getting stuff, but it's better to say we'd like, we love your stuff, but we'd also like this to help us out. And to piggyback off of a little bit of what both Katie and Tamara said, just really would love for you to also work with Travis's team in getting engaged with kind of the family engagement piece, the GO team piece, really looking at each school's strategic plan, and then how that rolls up into their cluster, and then how that rolls up to the district. To be kind of, and I was talking to Dr. Herring extensively about this and ran out of time, but just, you know, kind of reverse-engineering the idea that we go from the grassroots up instead of the up-down. And then also being very sensitive to our wraparound services, which you did mention that you're already looking at after-school and summer-school programs, but also before-school activities, because a lot of our buses get kids to school, you know, gosh, twenty, thirty minutes before school actually starts. And instead of them just sitting in the cafeteria, maybe having other things to do in the cafeteria, like chess club or, you know, whatever, just those kinds of ideas to really create an enriching environment. And I'm sorry, I did come in late. However, I was on Facebook the whole time. Love this idea of how we're really partnering with the city and whatever we can do to help support that work, and glad to know that the superintendent's working strongly with the mayor. But again, we're all here. We all, we all are here to support you as best we can. I guess my biggest question is, you're moving in a more strategic way. Can you give us a little bit of a taste of like kind of what you're thinking about doing strategically and what that timeline looks like? And to Katie's point, you know, are we looking to maybe potentially have foundations at each school? Even though she pointed out that schools, some schools need help with figuring out how to do foundations. And I think another great thing is, a lot of these foundations are, have been born from parents. And so, and I understand that, you know, we do have Georgia nonprofit organizations completely familiar with them, but, you know, is it possible that we could just do a little, you know, cross-pollination? Maybe a foundation could partner with the school that wants to have a foundation and help them get started? I know we did that with Hope Hill. We really, as a community, reached out and helped them get their foundation started. So again, I think there's a lot of cross-collaboration that can be going on, both through community and within our own organization. So I just want to put that out there. So if you can give me a little idea about like, you know, and not a lot of detail, but just a little bit of idea about what y'all are thinking with your board and your department, which is tiny. I hope you get more support because this is really significant work, and it really takes a significant team to pull this off. But, you know, kind of strategically at a high level, where you think you're headed and what some of your first big steps are?
So thank you for that question and for a lot of these ideas. These are really great. And this is also critical to the work we do, so thank you for that. I think when, as it comes to the foundations piece, what I am learning and understanding just from talking to schools is the bandwidth for every school to have a foundation is not quite realistic, right? And so I am looking at what would it be to have a cluster foundation perhaps? How would that work? Who would manage it and those things? I think strategically, that would be super helpful. It ties into the focus on a cluster-wide funding strategy. I think we, I want to kind of get away from school-based specifically resources, meaning as a child goes from elementary school to middle school, they should have the expectation that resources are there, which means that cluster-wide approach is necessary. And so I think if we could first start with the cluster-wide foundation approach, I think that would be helpful. I don't want to pretend that it's easy to manage a foundation at all of our schools' level. It is a lot of work, a lot of work.
And may I compliment again Ms. Hunter's statement with, and even in the notion of a cluster-wide foundational support, that does not minimize the reality that we know that there are schools in which foundations exist. The additional opportunity to that, though, is also to extend into, again, the partnership with looking at all things through the lens of equity and how can we do things to scale and reasonably given the capacity to get it done. So on one hand, it doesn't minimize or eliminate what currently exists, but it gives us some capacity to scale out to ensure that schools that don't have some connectivity. But all of this is, you asked a question, Board Member Olympiades, that is exploratory in nature, just given where we are. You also asked about, you mentioned Travis's team, and so I just wanted to make certain that I also named that partnerships is in the Strategy and Engagement Division. And so they are, this is an expansion or an extension of the team. So I think that that too is helpful. In addition to that, the other opportunity as we think about foundation support is to make certain that we've put some protocol or practice in place, practice in place to identify need. So as we think about what scaling looks like from a foundational lens, that we've also built some context around what that need looks like. And I appreciate your statement, Ms. Hunter, that, Mrs. Hunter, that it's not, I'll use the term Herculean. It's not impossible, but it is Herculean. And so we want to make certain that as we do that, we increase our own bandwidth within the organ, within our district or in partnership with others. I see that our Chief Strategy Officer stood up. Did you want? Did you want to say something in addition to that, Mr. Norvell?
No, I appreciate you covering it. But to add to Board Member Olympiades' point on how we work together and where strategy falls, while student outcome-focused goals and the district's strategic plan will help APFE think more strategically, at the school level, those school's strategic plans and the go-teams help guide. So, we lead every strategic planning conversation, if you've been in one, that your plan is your light and your shield. So, your shield in that this is what's important, this is what our students need. So, when partners come, when grant opportunities come, it's led with, this is the plan that will help our students move forward. And sometimes we forget that sometimes it's a protection of what the need truly is, which is also driven by the data that we talked about earlier. So, it is all connected, and enjoying her team come to cluster meetings and go-team meetings to really help. Okay, if these are what your resources are based on the budget, and you can't quite do what's in your plan, here's how else we can support to get you there. So, yeah.
Great, thank you so very much for a little deeper dive into how y'all work together. Appreciate it.
Jen, and then Jason?
Hi. Just really quickly, you know, when you, um, thank you Travis for just mentioning, like, there is that collaboration with go-teams. But some of our foundation leaders, at least in our cluster, don't sit necessarily on those teams. So, are you tapping some of the people that have been deeply involved in some of the foundations that you think are successful? Or it's kind of just to get even just data points and strategy and things that, and potholes to avoid, right?
Yes. I will specifically tell you, just because it happened probably last week, I was in touch with Grady Cares, and they've been very helpful in helping me think about how to leverage some of the resources and really kind of galvanize the community to be a part of supporting the work we're doing. So, I am open to really talking to what's, you know, foundations that are working, so we can kind of build the best practices around what to do for other, other districts and other schools.
Okay, I'll, I'm happy to reach out to you direct and copy Lisa. I know some, uh, parents that have been phenomenal in just creating incredibly successful programs in our cluster, so happy to make some introductions, just to, as an opportunity to talk.
That, that would be wonderful. I think at this point, we are, um, really in the information gathering phase, so it's a perfect time to explore. Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give a counterpoint to the discussion of the district helping to create and lead foundation growth in our, in our district as a whole. I, I think foundations are helpful, but they can also lead to the district relying on those foundations to supply things that the school district should be supplying. And when you have a massive program where the school district is starting foundations across the city, I can very easily see a situation where the school district will defer some funding to the foundations versus what the school district is, is applying. I think a, a model to consider would be one about building capacity for leaders, community leaders in communities to do that, their own work, and the school district supports an environment where foundations are much easier to create than not. But a, a system where APS is creating these mechanisms will likely lead to a system where APS is reliant on these mechanisms for some basic funding. An example of that would be North Atlanta, for many years, um, where, they were funding IB trainings and everything else, when the school district arguably could have been doing that. And they, and they did that for many years until APS finally took on signature programs. We don't need a situation where some of those costs are being pushed to these foundations, um, and, and that being more of a burden, because the reality around foundations is that they're up years and down years, and it all depends on who parent or community leadership is, whether it's Hope Hill, whether it's the North, North Atlanta Foundation, anybody else. It, it depends on the year and how successful those are. So, I would encourage us to really, on one hand, make sure that we're focusing our resources on building that capacity for community leaders to engage and support their local school, and at the same time, ensuring that as a school district, we don't defer or pass on obligations that, that we can fund onto these nonprofit foundations, because I think that's a place that we should not be going.
I think that's an excellent point. Thank you, thank you for that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just wanted to add a couple of thoughts to this as well, just, so first of all, thank you so much for the presentation and giving us an overview of, of the partnership, of the great work you guys are doing in the Partnership Office. And sitting on the Atlanta Partners for Education Board and have so for the last few years, just kind, just wanted to talk, you know, share with the board how it actually has been a process where we're not, where we're trying to get away from that pass-through. So, even this formation is just what, not even a year? Oh, yeah.
Yep, the end of 2020, yeah.
Yeah, so going on a full year of even creating a structure that is more connected, but more independent versus how it's been before. And so, they're having conversations, and maybe it's something that we should think about, um, some ideas in regards to being able to report out some of the work. But I know we've done presentations in the past of showing strategically how the, um, how we, how, how APFE has funded, um, besides the back of School Bash, like SC, the, the initial rollout of SEL work and the training that needed to happen. We, um, strategy-wise approved the funding to send the literacy backpack homes for early learners over the summer. And so, some of those things, so I think maybe we should, you know, just thinking about it, talk about ways that we can report out to, you know, report out to the board and other entities and more publicly of the work that's happening. And then, and then just talking about the cluster foundation pieces, and I think it's a lot of good, you know, a lot of good information that's happening there, as Katie and I are working with community in regards to creating a Carver Cluster Foundation, is something I'm working with the Thera Cluster Community to create the cluster foundation, where it is this conversation about schools not, not having the bandwidth, nor the individual re, um, individual resources themselves, but this collective effort of still wanting to make things happen for the entire cluster. We had, we, we reached out to Georgia Center for Nonprofits as an attorney, I reached out to friends that do pro bono work at law firms to help with the community piece. And so, thinking about APS's participation in that, and to Jason's point, maybe we should consider being a, sort of like the resource, the, like, the, the resource entity for, you know, for clusters or for groups that want to, um, you know, that want to think about creating our own foundation, because we had to, you know, just piecemeal and pull things together and call people. It would be good if we can at least be that, to Jason's point, like that resource and network of disseminating the information on how to get it done. This has been, and it's, it's been a process for sure. Just want to put that out there.
Katie, Katie, one more, then we'll move on.
Sorry, just to clarify, since I brought up foundations, it's a smaller school that was asking me about it, and I love it that you brought up, and Travis, thank you for your feedback, that it might not be the best fit. And I appreciate, um, Board Member Estevas's comment about empowering community members, parents, and being able to contribute to their school, and do something that's really meaningful and impactful for their school community. And while I greatly appreciate cluster foundations, I think great things can happen from that, it's that direct connection to a school's needs and what are, what's working. And I love it, as I know you all do, and parents want to do more, and family members want to do more. So, thank you for helping bridge that connection, and I agree wholeheartedly, like pushing out that information is so key. So, thank you again for all your hard work, and we look forward to supporting you in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Michelle, and then?
Yeah, I really appreciate Katie so much for your comments, and I really appreciate what Jason pointed out, and just want to make it real clear, you know, it, it's a tough balancing act. Uh, but I also want to say that it, I haven't, I did not mention this last month, so I'm off a month, so I am going to mention it this month. It is from foundations that we, we learned about Orton-Gillingham.
You said you missed a month.
Does that need to be adopted by the administration?
She said I missed a month.
Absolutely. Um, and, you know, and is that, is that a, is that a heavy funding lift? Absolutely. And could we ask some partners to come help us really dig deep in that work? Absolutely, because a week of OG isn't going to, isn't going to master it for our teachers. And to have a teacher take, you know, just a briefing course and then go back and be the lead on teaching the rest, we're not, we're not leading with fidelity in that area. And then, if we're looking at it from, from an equitable standpoint, um, schools that have strong foundations that can fund that kind of professional development are way ahead of us in many of our other schools. So, I just, I appreciate everyone's comments. You have a very, uh, it, being in the nonprofit world, especially trying to complement what's happening in an educational industry, is, is potentially one of the most complex dynamics out there. And like I said, we're all here to help you, so please let us know how, how to help. And, and, and I just, I just want to say, I appreciate everyone's comments. I certainly don't want to say that I'm trying to direct you on how to do your work. It's quite, it's quite an undertaking. And for anyone who's been on a foundation board for school, or a PTA, or in community service, trying to help schools, we all know what a complex web this is. And like I said, we're here to help.
Thank you.
All right, and again, thank you, Ms. Hunter. This is your first presentation to the board in this position and this capacity as Executive Director, although not new to APS, new to this role? So, well done. It's been how many months on the job now?
It is, uh, week eight.
This is week, hey, this is week eight? Okay, the job well done, and we, we do appreciate you, so thank you.
Great job, Joy, thank you.
And so, now, we're ready for item two, point three, our monthly financial update, provided by our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Lisa Bracken. Ms. Bracken, we are ready for your monthly financial update.
All right, fantastic, thank you. Good afternoon, Board Chair Collins, members of the board. Dr. Herring, today I'll present four topics related to finance. First, I'll provide you with the consolidated general fund financials for FY 2022, for all activities occurring in the months of July through December. Provide the quarterly student activity funds report, discuss the need for a budget adjustment, and give an update on where we are in the FY 2023 budget development process. Finally, I will hand off the presentation to Erica Long, Senior Advisor on Policy and Government Affairs, who will provide a legislative update. With the next four slides, I'll cover the FY 2022 consolidated general fund financials for the first half of the fiscal year. So far, we've collected about 80.63% of the total resources budgeted, with local collections at 95.98%, state at 35.79%, and other, which includes the Fund 150 Title I transfer in, at 37.76%. We are currently tracking ahead of pace as compared to this time last year for local and state revenue and resources overall. On slide five, we see the budget to actual expenditures so far for FY 2022 against the FY 21 trend. We have, oh, we're not on the trend yet. Uh, we currently are tracking, um, as appropriate spend, we've spent 44.91% of the budgeted allotment, spending in all functions is on pace. Now, we see the trend compared to FY 2021 at this time. The overall spend is slightly leading the previous year's spend at 44.91% as compared to 43.08%. We'll continue to monitor both collections and spend and adjust as needed. Detailed financials can be found in Agenda Item 9.4. On slide seven, you'll see the summary of the FY 2022 second quarter student activity funds report. So far, revenue exceeds expenses at $1.66 million and $1.24 million respectively. The detailed report can be found in Agenda Item 9.06. We have one budget adjustment for this month. The details of this adjustments were actually discussed last month during the presentation of the Chief Performance Officer, Matt Smith. For special revenue, we will be increasing both revenue and expenditures for the Emergency Connectivity Grant by $4,848,000. Details of this adjustment can be found in Agenda Item 6.1. Agenda Item 9.5 includes the detailed information report for special revenue adjustments less than $1 million that have occurred in January. The next several slides will provide an overview of the FY 2023 budget planning process that normally would have provided at the January Budget Commission meeting. This will include an overview of the Governor's State of the State address, some preliminary revenue assumptions, and an update on where we are in the process. The key takeaways for the FY 2022 mid-year amended budget include a recommended one-time salary supplement of $1,000 to $2,000, depending on position type, to FTE-funded, FTE-funded through the state QBE formula. Also, the recommendation includes a restoration of the current fiscal year's austerity reduction, which for APS would be just over $7.4 million. The midterm QBE sheets are also usually amended based on other factors, including enrollment, and the recommendation includes funds to cover these standard changes as well. The FY 23 recommended budget includes funds to cover the increases in TRS rates from 19.81% to 19.98% for those positions partially funded through the state's QBE formula. The Governor has recommended increasing the state salary schedule for teachers by $2,000. As a reminder, the current base salary on the state scale is $37,092, as compared to the APS starting salary of $49,048. The recommendation also allocates funds for standard increases in the formula, including changes to enrollment, staff, uh, training experience. The budget proposal is still under consideration. For FY 2023, local revenue, we anticipate building the budget at a, at the same 20.740 millage rate that we have used since FY 2019, when the millage rate decreased by a full point. While we've not received any preliminary assumptions from the Tax Assessor's Office, we are currently assuming an overall 3% growth to the digest. Slide 16 provides an overview of the history of the digest. Recall, just this year, we've participated in removing the sunset and the $50,000 home state exemption for APS property taxes, locking in an annual $415 savings per $100,000 of assessed home value. Assuming the Governor's proposal for the state QBE budget is approved, we would anticipate an increase in state funding that will be mostly offset by an increase in the district's contribution to the five-mill share. Overall, we expect a modest increase, although these preliminary numbers are conservative and will be revisited once the budget is approved. Other local revenue includes tuition, investment interest, rental of facilities, sale of assets, and other, and we anticipate a small decrease to this allotment for FY 2023. Our current fund balance is strong and sits at 18.44% of expenditures, and the amount in excess of 15% is currently earmarked for a smooth transition and step down from the SFR funds in FY 2024 and beyond. An update on where we are in the budget process, the budgets are currently sitting with principals and central office budget center managers. We continue to hold support sessions and trainings to provide guidance and assistance during the development process. By early March, we should have a full picture of the requested expenditure budgets for FY 23. At that time, those will be matched against our revenue projections and determine if there is a gap. Budget proposals will be reviewed in detail, and requests will be prioritized at a cabinet retreat currently scheduled for the end of March. And at this time, I can either take questions now or hand off to Erica and then come back for questions.
A clarification on your slide 19. About fund balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, right there. Um, it says, assuming 100% collections and 100% spend. Obviously, we know that, that 100% collections never happens. And, not sure I can say never, but rarely.
Rarely happens, yeah.
Rarely happens. Um, using a more realistic analysis.
Mm-hmm.
What happens to the fund balance?
Well, the way that we're collecting, that we are ahead of pace for revenue in the, as compared to this point last year, and we are tracking ahead of spend, but only by a little bit, and we did not fully spend down the budget last year. So, currently, the fund balance anticipates using 14.3. Based on how we're collecting and spending, I don't think we will, um, use that, use that amount or any. So, it's still, we're only at halfway through. still, we're only at halfway through the fiscal year. Um, and so that could change at any point in time. But if my crystal ball holds true, uh, we will actually not dip into fund balance this year and will actually be sitting a little ahead of that eighteen point four four percent.
Crystal ball's better than anybody knows. So, so thank you for that.
Sure thing.
Love the fund balance number. Um, I had a question, because I know we have new board members and folks watching from home, and I think it's important to point out what you had said, that we anticipate an increase in state funding, but that's going to be essentially wiped out by the five mil share. So can you explain what the five mil share is?
Absolutely. Um, so the way that our QBE formula works is that the state will build an allocation based on, they'll just run the formula. Um, and that's what we would earn as a school district. Um, in the past, there's been two reductions to that formula. So we don't actually get to keep what that full allotment would look like for our district. The first is austerity. And so the Governor has proposed that austerity reduction be returned in this fiscal year, and that will carry over to next year if that's approved. The second, much larger, is what's called the five mil share, or the local five mil share, or local fair share. I've heard it called all of those things. Um, and basically what that is, is the state will look at what your local digest, your property digest, generates with five mils and will reduce that amount from your QBE earnings. Basically, it's the skin in the game for a local school district. They're saying every school district should leverage what, um, up to five mils of property taxes to offset what the state is contributing to local education. Uh, for our school district, uh, that is very highly dependent on local revenue, we're about seventy three percent local revenue. And where the digest continues to be strong, we see local fair share scaling up by about ten percent every year. Uh, that local fair share does not take into account things like exemptions. And so we are seeing dollars taken from the QBE that is higher than what we can actually collect back in local revenue. Uh, but that is part of why, when even as we're seeing large increases to the state formula, we could even see a decrease in state funding for what we can actually use because of that offset.
So it seems like a refresh of the funding formula, including the local fair share is in order, hopefully. Um, and I know there had been discussion by Governor Deal to revamp that formula to one that was similar to what we have done with the student success formula.
And equity weighted formula.
Um, which would take away from some, which would reduce some of that impact that we see with the local fair share. Um, as far as local revenues, the sunset was removed because of voters in November. So they're, they should not feel any hiccup this year, right?
Right. That homestead is locked in at fifty thousand dollars.
Um, and there is, what are the prospects? Well, I won't ask that question right now. Okay. Okay. That's it. That's all I got.
We do know that there are a lot of other homestead bills that are currently flying around. I'm sure Erica, Erica can probably speak to those as well.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I want to back up a little to your last explanation because I need at least two or three takes.
Absolutely.
Could you walk me through that one more time as to how we get to ten percent that we're giving back? And is that, is that because of, um, just walk me through it one more time. I'm not going to assume what I heard. I'm going to
Sure. And it's actually much higher than ten percent. We can see an annual increase of up to ten percent on the previous year, every year, because the rate our, our digest is growing. So basically, um,
Oh, I think I just got you. Go ahead. I'm
Yeah. So basically, they will run the formula. And let's say, because of our student population and the number of teachers we have and our enrollment, we, uh, get a hundred dollars, right? Through our levy, through our, our tax digest, every mil brings in a dollar for us in local revenue. So basically, the state will say, of your ten dollars we're giving you, we're withholding this amount for your local revenue, your five mil share, we hold five dollars back. Uh, because our local revenue continues to grow, that increases at a faster rate than the state does. So a much higher percentage every year of the QBE drops, uh, because of local five, five mil share. Um, I believe it's over, it's close to around fifty percent, maybe even over fifty percent for us of the, what our state allocation is for the local five mil share. And so I can get that number for you, uh, and let you know for sure.
There, I
It's a much higher than ten percent.
I appreciate the clarity. I think I'm, I, I think I misheard you. I think I confused the five percent and ten percent and tried to figure out like if tads were being, you know, like if we're giving more than we should because we're using our tax allocated dollars to go other places. But I get what you're saying now. It's all based on the, on the overall growth
Is the value.
Of the, of the value of the properties in the city. We're always going to be assessed at that five mil, no matter what we do as a city internally to diversify those funds to support the city. Uh, and we see a huge increase in that. And, and I get it. I understand it. Um, you know, there's, and just to be fair, there, there are many school districts throughout the state of Georgia that just do not have the kind of revenue that we have. So I understand kind of the, the tithing of why we do this to be supportive as a, as a state group. Um, however, it's interesting, uh, what you pointed out and kind of agree with Jason, that maybe there's a better way to kind of create a more equitable funding formula, uh, based on, um, based on the population and not so much the value.
And if nothing else, it helps to give that explanation because, um, you know, as when the Governor gives very vocal, um, and very public, uh, presentations about growing the state QBE formula, there is assumption that we will be able to pass all of that along. Um, and usually we can because we do have a strong local revenue. But just like with the five mil share, all of the one-time payments and the salary increases, um, only if you, you know, extrapolate from twenty three percent of our budget as state and the other seventy something percent is, um, is from local, only about twenty three percent of the salary increases come from the state too. So for all of our employees that are not funded through the state QBE, uh, any local, our local revenue has to pick up if we're going to continue to give those compensation and that raises to all employees.
And just to be clear, and I know the answer to this, but I, just to be clear, since you just brought that up, we employ more than what, uh, we get or what we're recommended to employ through
We employ far more and we pay them far better than the state salary schedule.
I think that just needs to be, you know, out there for the public to know that we're, we're, we're way ahead. We're doing things way differently than what is kind of the framework from the state.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bracken.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Superintendent, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes today just to update you on the legislative session so far. Um, and I'll start out just with a little general comment about, um, student success funding and just what I'm hearing at the Capitol. And basically, I'm hearing nothing in terms of whether there will be any broad general work on redoing, you know, recalibrating how we fund schools. I don't anticipate that happening this session. Um, it is an idea that was contemplated by the current Governor early in his term. Um, but I think between things that happened in twenty nineteen, twenty, and where we are, of course, now in an election year, I don't have any much anticipation that that type of work, um, will be able to happen during this session. Um, today was legislative day twelve of forty. Um, we are in the busy time of the legislative season. Um, committees have been meeting. Um, education bills have started to go through the process. Um, there has been one major education bill that has passed the House. That's HB three eighty-five, which is teacher return to work legislation. This bill is a part of the Governor's agenda. It's a part of his teacher pipeline. And the idea is to allow for teachers who have retired after thirty years of service and have set out of the workforce to come back into the districts and work without penalties at TRS. Um, and I think there is a hope that this will offer some relief to school districts in terms of staffing issues. Um, of course, there is some talk in the community that, you know, some teachers still, because of health reasons, would not necessarily feel comfortable coming back to work, but that flexibility has been provided. That bill passed the House, um, and it will cross over to the Senate side. There has been substantial work on the House Education Committee already, um, on voucher legislation. Education Committee has only met for one meeting so far this session, and they took that opportunity to take up two voucher bills. One bill, HB sixty, passed the House last year, but did not make it across to the Senate time, to the Senate side in time. This is a student special need scholarship, um, that has specific caps around availability and the numbers of students who can participate. Um, the other voucher bill, HB nine nine nine, is a new bill for this session, and it is a general voucher bill that would provide a six thousand dollar voucher to any child who has been enrolled in a public school. Um, that, you know, we cannot overstate how troubling this concept is. Um, there was a very active discussion about the bill on the committee level with lots of commentary and testimony, um, on either side of the issue, but quite a bit of testimony against the bill. It passed. It passed by a narrow margin, by just about one vote. Um, one encouraging fact is that the author of the bill also wrote HB sixty, Representative Wes Cantrell, and he has indicated that he would consider combining the two bills, um, maybe to get rid of some duplication between the two. Um, so it's, and it remains to be seen what the next steps in the process will be. The bills have not yet been assigned to House Rules Committee, so we don't know the timing of them coming to the floor. Um, but that is, but this voucher legislation, of course, we are working actively with our Georgia Education Coalition, with other public school supporters and groups, and making sure that whatever work can be done to at least make the bills less bad, that we're doing that. Um, the House Education Committee passed a bill that provides school choice to military students. These are the students, the children of active duty service members. Um, we worked with the committee to make sure that there was a provision in place, making it clear that students can only attend a school with space available. Uh, we know in, in our district, in our community, even if there are military students who choose to go to a school other than what they are zoned for, we would need to have that safeguard in place so that they can't just demand a spot at a school that's already oversubscribed. Um, that bill passed out of the committee and has been sent to House Rules. Um, the legislature has spent quite a bit of time and is, actually, the Senate Education Committee just wrapped up a conversation right now um, around critical race theory legislation. And I know so many of you are following this and a lot of the other hot button cultural issues that are being discussed by the legislature. Um, whether it's talk about limiting what our teachers teach and what our children learn, whether it's talk about limiting our ability to require vaccinations of students, um, talk about limiting the availability of sports and athletics to transgender children, um, and even this Parents Bill of Rights legislation, which are three or four different bills at this point that set up an exhaustive list of parent rights to have input in, um, the school, the operations of the school. Um, there are quite a few cultural hot button bills that are out there. Um, what's troubling about these bills is that they really step into the relationship between the school, the teacher, and the community. Uh, and in many cases, create an adversarial environment. Um, some of the bills would put principals in the position of having to monitor and adjudicate over whether a teacher has stepped over the line. Is there teaching a certain subject or, um, certain parts of subject matter? So it's, it's going to take a lot of work for us to slim down these bills and make our voice heard on them. Um, the resolution that you all will consider later tonight is a big and important part of that. Um, so far in our conversations with legislators and with, um, the Governor's Office and Lieutenant Governor's Office, we've made clear that our principals and our teachers don't have the capacity to be customer service representatives or judge and jury over these questions, and that there's so much subjectivity in this legislation that really takes away from the educational experience of our students. Um, so we're in the midst of those cultural conversations right now, but we have worked with and we continue to have dialogues about some of the administrative burdens that are created by these bills and how they're troublesome for our schools. Um, on the question of redistricting of school board seats, of course, your board districts are tied directly to the city council districts. There is a role for the city council in that process. They're actually starting that work today. The City Council Committee on Council is starting the work of drawing up maps, um, and doing their redistricting because this has to be finished up by the legislature. So each, each county, each city draws its own maps. They're sent to the legislature as local legislation and pass as local bills and then sign into law by the Governor. Um, so our city council has just started that process, and they have to have that finished up over the next couple of weeks before session ends.
Just to put it on the record, um, and thank you, um, Ms. Long, for, uh, the presentation and your work and having to go over there and, and I don't know how you do it. I, I remember as, uh, before I was on the board, as a parent going over there to advocate for educational issues. I mean, how do you make all the meetings, right? But I just want to go back to the redrawing of the city council lines. Uh, my understanding is that once the, the, the proposed new maps are, uh, out there, that it won't go into effect until twenty twenty-five? Is that correct?
I am not sure about that. And of course, um, with upcoming school board elections, now that you all have staggered terms.
Yes.
Uh, I, I believe there's a need for something sooner than that. Um, but I, I will work with Nina and we'll call over to the city.
Okay. I would appreciate it because, uh, you know, there's, there, all the odd number seats were up in
Yes.
You know, less than two years now. So be, I'm just curious to know how, again, just trying to think ahead.
Okay.
Um, and then thank you for, you know, bringing us up to speed with all the, the resistance of being open-minded with respect to being educated. So I really appreciate that.
Um, I had a question about the process for redistricting and making sure that we're engaged in that process, uh, school board members. What are we doing as a district? And what can we do as school board members to engage and make sure that as city councils drawing their maps, that they're considering schools and some type of cohesiveness in their drawing? Because there's some, there's some overlap between districts, uh, but there, it does make sense to some degree. Uh, but there may be some opportunities to make it even better. Uh, so how can we help in that process?
So I think, you know, looking at the tremendous growth in the city's population, it's clear that the, the council districts will have to get moved around. Um, I think as a school district, this is not necessarily an issue where we can speak with one voice on every particular district. Um, but it may be more of a board member-specific conversation with the city council, um, or the board working with the council, um, to help them through that process. Um, you know, as a school district, of course, our district lines, our lines won't change. We are Atlanta. Um, but, so from district to district, from precinct to precinct, um, for lack of a better word, this seems like more of a political venture. Um, where I, you know, I'm happy, of course, to help facilitate conversations. I made a point to reach out to the municipal clerk's office just to get an understanding of timetable. Um, but I would not want to speak for a individual board member's idea or interest or goal with respect to district lines unless, you know, until you all figure out like the overall board position on that.
So as, so if an individual board member wanted to reach out, who would they be reaching out to at the city?
Um, a combination of the municipal clerk's office. Um, and then the first stop at the city council is the City Council Committee on Council. That's chaired by Councilmember Andrea Boone. Um, and then, of course, the council president's office would have a role in scheduling, you know, the votes on the committee's work and how the full council looks at, looks at the maps. Um, but I, I will stress that these are maps that Um, but I, I will stress that these are maps that ultimately have to be passed as local legislation by the General Assembly and signed into law by the governor. So there are timetables that they have to follow.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I flagged that for school members and the public who, over the years, have provided feedback about whether or not districts make sense.
For clarity, it needs to be approved by local legislation. What date, is it in April?
Well, the last day of session is April fourth.
April four.
Um, there are, there are counties across the state that are at different stages of this work. Um, so there are some that have been passed by at least one chamber or another on the local consent calendar. Um, but because it is a local bill, it doesn't have that crossover day deadline. So it can be approved after crossover day, which is currently scheduled for March fifteenth. But sometime between March fifteenth and Sine Diya on April fourth.
It needs to be finalized.
Yes.
And then it goes before the governor by, he has to sign it by July?
Yes, yes. And, you know, as a local bill, you know, the idea is that the local delegation, the city council, city hall have worked together and are on the same page. Um, so in most cases, um, the maps are treated with the consent and the leadership of that local delegation. Of course, we've seen in the news that things have happened differently in some other counties, but the anticipation is that the Atlanta City Council and everyone will be on the same page with our delegation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Long.
One else? Do you have anything?
No, I'll just appreciate the sharing from Mrs. Long. We've also had the opportunity to, as we know, uh, last Friday, along with yourself, um, Board Chair Collins and, um, Board Member Howard, um, continued to interface, uh, as we're in the midst of legislative session. And we have had the opportunity to also engage with both the governor and the lieutenant governor today, uh, as well. Uh, separate days, but we continue to stay on, on post, and I appreciate Mrs. Long's sharing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So thank you, Mrs. Long. And then we will now have item two point four, our COVID-19 Public Health Data Update from Dr. Katika Lovett. Good to see you, Dr. Lovett, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. We are ready for the COVID-19 Public Health Data Update.
Thank you, Dr. Herring, and good afternoon, Madam Board Chair and members of the Board of Education. I'm excited to share with you again our COVID-19 update, and I will be joined today by Dr. Valencia Hildreth, who's our Health Services Director, and Juliana Prieto, who's our District Epidemiologist. Here we have our agenda. Again, our purpose is to share public health updates and an overview of the district's expanded COVID-19 mitigation strategies. Here you have our roadmap. We'll start by talking about the public health data and the new CDC guidance. We'll also talk more about our mitigation measures, in particular, our surveillance testing and vaccination data. We'll also do a recap of test to stay and isolation and quarantine guidance. And finally, we'll talk about COVID-19 communications. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and bring up Mrs. Prieto to get us started on our public health data and the CDC guidance.
Good afternoon, everyone. So first, we're going to look at the epidemiology report produced by the Fulton County Board of Health. This report was released on Wednesday, February second, 2022. Um, and on this report, we can see that during the two weeks of January thirteenth through January twenty-sixth, there were fewer new cases of COVID-19 in Fulton County than the previous two weeks, or the previous two weeks in January. Thirty-seven percent of those cases did come from the Atlanta area. And similarly, during the same two week period, we also saw a decrease in pediatric cases in the Fulton County, uh, region, where twenty-nine percent of those new pediatric cases came from Atlanta. So overall, there was a decrease of new COVID-19 cases during those two last weeks of January. Um, as of February first, 2022, CDC community transmission levels indicated that DeKalb and Fulton County were still in that high community transmission. We do have new data points, um, that were released today, and they do continue to show that DeKalb and Fulton are still in that high community transmission rate. Um, but again, we're still seeing that decline. And here we can see, uh, the community transmission per week for both DeKalb and Fulton County. And this is dating back till November twenty-ninth, 2021. So we mentioned this before. There was this giant increase around the December, late December after the holidays, and it continued to increase until mid, mid-January. Um, and now we're closer to that ten percent mark for both counties. In our last meeting, we discussed our mask wearing matrix. As a reminder, we use two, the two weeks prior to our target date to make decisions about mask wearing. So although we did not meet the criteria for the February first target date as outlined in the table below, APS will continue to monitor COVID-19 community transmission levels on a weekly basis and will adjust masking protocols as necessary. We will also continue with our other mitigation strategies such as surveillance testing and encouraging COVID-19 vaccinations. So this table on this slide outlines the weeks that we would use for target weeks. So for example, for the February fourteenth target week for possible mask optional, we would use the weeks of January thirty-first and February seventh. So we already have highlighted on here that January thirty-first was in that high transmission. Um, and again, we do have data points that say February seventh, we still have that high transmission. So as of now, the February fourteenth date when we return, we will still be wearing masks in, in all APS buildings. Uh, since our last board meeting, CDC did update their COVID-19, uh, guidance for K through twelve schools. So we continue to use this CDC guidance and public health guidance to help inform our decisions. Um, and just a summary of the recommendations that are, are given by CDC. So they'd still recommend universal indoor masking for all individuals ages two and older, um, in K through twelve schools. Uh, they also recommend reducing the recommended time for isolation and quarantine periods to five days, uh, as long as criteria is met. They also want schools to maintain that three feet of physical distancing between students when possible, um, and also enacting multiple mitigation layers. Um, and then, of course, the test to stay as an option to keeping more students in the school setting.
All right, thank you, Juliana. So we'll keep going here and talk a little bit more about our expanded mitigation measures. When we started the semester, coming back, of course, we were in a very high level of community spread. We started the year, of course, the semester virtually, but in order to return to the in-person environment, we had to really beef up our mitigation measures. Here are the measures that we have put in place as a recap. The twice weekly optional testing for students began on January the tenth. We also begin the test to stay or something we call modified quarantine, starting January the eighteenth. The twice weekly testing for athletes and performing arts, which we'll talk a little bit more about, started January the eighteenth. And finally, we have continued the mandatory twice testing a week for staff. There have been lots of questions around the cadence regarding surveillance testing or the off-ramp, if you will, for when we'll decrease the amount of testing that we're doing. So I'll share here first, starting with our staff testing. As I shared, we are doing staff testing twice weekly. But in order to change that cadence, we are looking at the community spread information, very similar to what we're doing in terms of masking. When the community spread falls below the high category for two consecutive weeks, then the new criteria will be put in place. And that new criteria for staff will be a once a week cadence in terms of surveillance testing. And looking at the information for athletes and those students who are in the performing arts, again, the criteria to change is the community spread level. And when that falls below the high category for two consecutive weeks, that testing will not be required. It, of course, will remain optional and recommended, but it will not be required when we exit the high level of community transmission as relates to students who are athletes or those in the performing arts. Here we have surveillance testing data. Of course, I won't go through all of these numbers, but I will point your attention to the information at the bottom, starting with January the third. You can see that our positivity rate at that time was five percent. And again, our positivity rate is based on the surveillance testing data. That is looking at staff who are tested twice a week and students, again, who we've added now with the option for twice a week as well. If you follow the trends here, you can see that we went from five percent to as of January the twenty-eighth, ending with point thirty-two percent. So significant decrease in terms of our positivity rates. This just recap surveillance testing. Again, we've talked about this twice a week and increasing our students' testing as well. So let's go a little deeper into the athletics and extracurricular activities. Of course, we talked about that date being January the eighteenth, when we began the process of requiring all students participating in athletics and all extracurricular activities to agree to surveillance testing twice a week. Now, this is following the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, which speaks to when students or when we are experiencing the highest level of community spread, that we should put some additional mitigation strategies in place, and this is one of those strategies. The new protocol will be in effect as long as the community spread level remains in the high category, as a reminder. And it does not apply to students who are in after-school arts activities that are related to coursework or other activities like evening band that's related to core curriculum or coursework. Of course, it does apply to students in extracurricular activities not associated with an enrolled class. Here we have the example of things like after-school drama clubs or performance arts. The protocol does apply to students at all grade levels. And here we also just put as a reminder, of course, state law allows local school districts to impose these additional requirements for participation in extracurricular activities only, including safety requirements. As a reminder, here's information regarding mask wearing and other safety protocols for athletics and for our fans. Of course, we all enjoy our winter athletics and competition events, but it's essential to reiterate and reinforce our mask requirements and physical distancing for athletes and fans as we support them, I mean, as we support our athletes and their fellow competitors. Mask wearing and physical distancing requirements are listed here as follows. Masks and face coverings are required for students, coaches, and staff in accordance with our mask wearing protocol. Masks are not required for students while in active play. I'd like to pause here and talk a little bit about active play. When we're referring to active play here in this context, we are talking about active play as relates to competitive sports. This is not the same as our physical education program, which is a part of our core curriculum. Physical distancing must also continue to be adhered to as a safety net. That information is listed here, six feet for all adults, three feet between students. And of course, masks and face coverings are required for spectators and fans at all indoor competitions. Masks will be provided, of course, we'll have them at all the entrances, we currently do, if people do arrive without a mask, as we are continuing to enforce our mask wearing protocol. So at this time, we're going to bring up Dr. Hildreth to walk us through a bit of our vaccination data.
Thank you. So this information that we have before, before us is our student vaccination rates, and this is overall for our school districts, our school district, we have a twenty-six percent. If we look at just the traditional schools, we have a twenty-seven percent for our student vaccination rate for those who are fully vaccinated. If we look at a more granular level and look at the clusters, we'll see that that range is between eight percent to seventy, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty-nine percent, um, when we look at all the nine clusters. And if we drill down a little bit more, we'll see that those elementary schools have the larger disparity for vaccination, um, having lower vaccination rates. Keep in mind that November the second, two thousand twenty-one, was when those individuals five to eleven were eligible to be vaccinated. So we're just trying to play a little bit of catch-up with offering those, and we're going to be, um, we're still working on targeted events. Okay? Now, this, this slide here shows the charter and partner school vaccination rates. We're at twenty-three percent for the charter and partner schools. Again, the district is a total twenty-six percent. And I do want to pause this to say that we have had a significant increase. So if you can recall, January the third, we were at twenty-three percent. And now we're, um, at, at January thirty-first, we're at twenty-seven percent for the district, I'm sorry, twenty-six percent for the district. So that's an increase of three percent across the board when we look at the charter schools, at the traditional schools, and overall as the school district. And this staff vaccination rate is the information that we have for all staff, fifty-six point nine percent for our overall staff vaccination rate. When we look at our school-based staff vaccination rate, we're at sixty-one point five. And then our district level is forty-eight point, forty-five point nine percent. So just to go over a few of the vaccination events that we hosted at the end of January and this month, we hosted a home game, home basketball game vaccination events to look at some targeted, um, events. Now, that included, that was open to all of the, uh, clusters that you see here, Tharol, South Atlanta, Washington, Carver, but of course, any APS student could attend. Um, we had a total of fifty total vaccinations at the Tharol cluster with thirty APS students, seventy-one total for South Atlanta with thirty-five. Washington, um, came in a little bit late, which was Friday, and we had a total of sixty-seven total vaccinations and thirty-nine students. And we have one more vaccination event at a home game, which is February the eleventh, this Friday, and we hope to have even more students, um, and individuals in the community vaccinated. Now, we are also working on targeted vaccination events, again, to look at those disparities in those, um, low vaccination rate areas. We're working with, um, to improve the engagement, to increase the vaccination rates for those areas. We're working with our internal partners for, with communication, our social work department, as well as our external partners to work on improving those vaccination rate and, um, getting the message out there so they can take advantage of that opportunity. This information is just for a reiteration to let you know that DPH information for quarantine was updated January the seventh. We put this here just to, as a, 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 uh, information to come back to you guys to know that January the seventh was the most updated guidance, and we just want to keep that information relevant. It is available on our website. The January the seventh, two, two thousand twenty-two was the most updated DPH guidance. And just to recap our test to stay, Ms. Prieto.
Okay, so just as a quick recap, APS began implementing the test to stay protocol or the modified quarantine starting on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, it is offered to unvaccinated close contacts and basically anyone that is unvaccinated and had a, an exposure at the school setting or the work setting if their staff members can participate in this program. They just have to be able to have at least, uh, testing at least twice during their ten-day quarantine. Um, and individuals can still sign up for surveillance testing. That, the form is on our website. Uh, just as a reminder, the consent form must be on file before they are able to participate. Um, and we did, in order to assist students, staff, and parents with understanding our COVID-19 protocols, we did create these decision trees or flow charts that are on our APS website. Um, so the first one is a symptom and isolation decision tree that will, um, help individuals that are experiencing symptoms or may have just tested positive for COVID-19, um, just giving them more information on what their next step should be. Uh, we also have one for close contact and quarantine. So anyone that has had a recent exposure to a COVID-19 case, um, gives them more information on what their next step should be. Uh, not all close contacts need to quarantine at home, so, um, this way they'll have more information on that. And just as a reminder, if any new symptoms are developed, we are still, uh, recommending that individuals stay home and monitor, and of course, notify their school so that they can have more information. Um, and then just more information related to test to stay. So students can participate in test to stay if they meet all of the following criteria, and specifically says students, but of course, this is open to staff as well. Um, as long as the COVID-19 exposure occurred at the school, school-related activity, or the workplace, if we're, um, talking about staff member, if they continue to have no new symptoms, and if they can be tested during their quarantine period at least twice. So the testing can be either through our APS surveillance testing or they can be monitored by, a test monitored by healthcare professional or lab professional. And of course, we want a copy of that lab result sent to the school. Um, and they have to be able to wear a well-fitting mask for the ten full days after exposure. Um, and finally, there is an example of a test to stay timeline down here, um, and it contains recommendations on when the two tests should take place, um, if they decide to take the test outside of school. And again, all this information is on our APS website.
Okay, and I'll just end with some information regarding our communications. You heard Ms. Prieto mention that the information that we shared today, including the vaccination rates, the protocols, as well as the flow charts, all of that information is available on our website. We have streamlined that website, and here's a little snapshot of what the top of it looks like. But the website is simply atlantapublicschools.us backslash COVID. So we wanted to make it pretty simple there. We also have a weekly newsletter that goes out to parents and staff, and we really use that as an opportunity to send any alerts around new information. And we're also happy to share that we're going to be sending out a link actually through our weekly communication regarding our revised On Course Guide. You may remember the On Course Guide when we were, in the early days of the pandemic, we created the guide to really capture all of our protocols so that parents, staff, everyone had a reference to see the information that we were putting in place in terms of health and safety. So that information is coming soon. So with that, that has concluded our presentation from today, and we are happy to take your questions at this time.
Hi, and thank you. As you can imagine, these protocols drive a lot of sentiment, a very wide variety of sentiment across the district. So I can't speak for what other board members are hearing, so I do want to speak for District 4. Regarding active play, and you know, thank you for clarifying a little more clearly tonight. I'm hopeful and curious if you can help me understand why physical education, especially for our elementary kids, because they seem to be most impacted by some of the things that they've experienced, especially, you know, like, some adults can't handle like the things we've learned during COVID and how to kind of get through it in a positive way. But I think physical education is such a huge part for these kids, and having the mask restriction is challenging. So, you know, some clarity around that would be great. And then I have one more question after that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, oh yeah, I tricked you. I had a long pause. If you'll answer that, then the next question is a different subject matter.
Okay, well, thank you for your question, first of all. So regarding active play, again, that notion that we listed here, and I said it refers to competitive sports. When we look at the physical education environment, of course, two things. First, if PE is happening outdoors, students do not have to wear masks. That's the first piece I want to make sure everyone's aware of. The second piece, the physical education environment looks very different in our schools. So in PE, we're talking about larger groups of students who are engaging in a physical activity, as opposed to competitive sports where there's a higher level of exertion that's happening. We also have difficulty, not really difficulty, but in the gym setting, as you might imagine, things like spacing and physical distancing when they're doing group activities. Students are closer, they're in that three-feet space. And so during that time, it's critical that they are still following the guidance that we've put in place just to ensure their safety. So two things, we have more students during that time, and we're needing to make sure that we follow those additional safety protocols, as opposed to, for example, basketball. I use that as my example. In the basketball setting, we may have a basketball game. There may be five students who are on the court playing the other five students. Those students during that time, of course, they are engaging, and it's highly, the exertion for those activities is pretty high. But the other piece to that, that we couple with that, because they're taking masks off, they do have to do the testing. So we're still making sure that we're keeping them safe. So it's really all about just ensuring that when students are in those closer quarters together, we can still ensure their safety. And that's essentially why in the physical active, in the physical education classrooms, whether that's the gym or the classroom where they're having those activities, we have recommended that they remain in masks at this time.
Okay. So I, it's been a long time since I was doing PE in a school. So I don't know if they're doing it in the classroom, but in a large gym environment, I would hope that there's a time where we trust our teachers, that they're setting up opportunities for those kids to be spaced out, that we give those principals some autonomy to help those teachers guide that way, because I think those teachers will be the first to say how important releasing some of that energy might be during the daytime.
Yes, and we have encouraged people, again, to, one, really take advantage of the outdoor environment. We're, we're safe to do so, of course, as it's warming up, we're really encouraging that. But we also encourage our teachers, as they're working through the activities and they're playing them for their class, to make sure that they're considering things like the physical distancing and other things. And of course, there are times where students need a mask break. We're not opposed to that. If a student has to take a mask break to breathe, or many of our children have asthma, things of that nature, teachers are taking that into consideration and are moving forward. And we're encouraging that as well.
Okay, and I can appreciate a mask break. I'm pretty excited to have one myself right now. And regarding the masks overall, and just what our mask policy is, so I've had a lot of questions, so, so many questions, just about, you know, help me understand, we have a county, Fulton County right next to us, it's twice our size, it is very diverse. You know, they recently went to mask optional. So I receive that question quite often. So to help me be able to speak clearly, I would love to understand what were they able to consider that we are not able to consider?
Now, I can't speak specifically to everything that they consider. I will say that both Fulton County Schools, as well as Atlanta Public Schools, we, of course, work with our local Board of Health, Fulton County Board of Health. We actually have individuals from Fulton County Board of Health who are on our advisory, our external community advisory. And so we've considered many things, looking at the mitigation strategies in place, also looking at our rate of vaccinations, which, again, you saw that rate, the rates are relatively low, to be quite frank with you. The other piece, our, our participation in surveillance testing. Again, it's not where we want it to be, it's about 20%. And that's not optimal for the school district. So there are many factors that we consider, mainly those rates of positivity initially, as well as those rates of things like vaccination, participation in surveillance testing, and other things of that nature. Those are the primary factors. But again, it's important to note that we have come up with the off-ramp or the matrix, and we are excited about the downward trend that we're seeing with COVID-19. And we're very hopeful that as that trend changes, we will also move to mask optional.
Okay, I appreciate your answers.
Jason? I mean, I'm sorry, Tamara, so I apologize.
Jason can go if he wants, but, actually, that answered several of my questions, so thank you for all of that information. I just also want to say, you know, I, I really appreciate the decision trees. I mean, I think that was a great, it's great to be able to visualize that. I also appreciate both this and the last couple of presentations, having that initial slide where you have the purpose, the roadmap, and then the tape. I think that that's a really good way of capping presentations. But I appreciate that. What's left of my questions, again, there are, there is still confusion about what kinds of activities after-school require the testing and then not the testing. I mean, there's, I get a lot of questions from, from people about, you know, what exactly activities do you have to test for, what you don't have to test for? And then, about the spectators at sporting events, who's enforcing that? Like, is that put, I mean, that's a hard thing to...
Right, and so, of course, with, with spectator, thank you for your questions, with spectators for sporting events, again, we make it very clear that it is the district's, well, excuse me, the district's practice that we are in masks for those sports. We do have disposable masks that are available. We share that with our athletic directors at the local school level, the individuals who are, you know, taking tickets, all of the individuals around the gaming atmosphere are very, very well aware of that. We do our best to encourage individuals in that environment to make sure that they're wearing masks, but of course, we cannot, we can't enforce it, you know, and ultimately, we can't put people out that don't have on a mask. We give them masks, we encourage them to wear masks. The other piece that we're doing, though, is a safety precaution. We're also limiting the capacity during those larger events. So that's another safety precaution. In the event that individuals are not fully masked, we hope that they are. But in the event that they're not, we're keeping those numbers relatively small. And we have not had any issues so far with meeting capacity or going anything past that. They've been really substantial numbers to keep everyone safe and physically distanced. And your first question, I do apologize, if you don't mind repeating.
It's okay, it was just more of a comment about how people are, you know, confused about the kinds of activities. Have somewhere to point them to and say, you know, so that they could know, if I'm doing Club X after-school, I'd have to do...
Okay, and we thank you for that feedback. We also, as we have the weekly alerts and communications, we use that as an opportunity to clarify that. We have received some questions regarding extracurriculars as well. So I will note that, thank you.
Very much.
Jason?
Hello. Great to see that the surveillance data is showing that positivity rates are decreasing. I had a question about that chart. It says that the number of students tested at least a couple of times last month was at 25,000 and 31,000. It says students tested, but I wanted to make sure that those were actually students, individual students versus total number of tests.
Yeah, I do believe this is total number of tests, if you can clarify that. We have had, the vendor, the vendor sends us this information. We've had it tweaked a few times for clarity, but I do believe this is the number of tests, just for clarity's sake. I don't believe that this number is 31,000 within a week, but you all can clarify for me if I'm correct there.
So it's number of tests per student, so since they are tested twice per week, that's why there's that giant increase from the week prior.
Got it, okay. That, that makes sense. So there's roughly, you know, guesstimate, half of our traditional school students are now surveillance testing.
That, that's a good estimate, yes.
Which is, which is great. That's a good, good increase. And it's also good that we're seeing positivity rates go down. And it looks like they're going down to rates that we saw after the Delta surge, which is also good. And I think, piggybacking on Jen's questions, I, I do want to make sure that we were being, as, we're using all of the information that we have on top of what the CDC is giving us to determine when, when certain off-ramps are taken. I understand masks. I'm very hopeful that with masks, if the rate keeps dropping like it does spring, we can get, become mask optional, right? That would be great. But testing student athletes is one that continues to come up. And I think that part of the confusion is that prior to January, we didn't do it. But now we're doing it, and then we're going to do it until probably the spring. And I think that's, that is, that can be a little confusing because I can understand during the Omicron surge, there being the need to do it. But as the numbers are going down, we're seeing positivity rates decrease significantly. Is it still necessary to test those kids twice a week? And on top of that, does the off-ramp have to be when the numbers are not high? Because, again, we weren't doing this in the fall when the numbers were high.
And of course, we're taking all of that into consideration. That initial decision was made based on CDC's recommendation to cancel all sports during high community transmission. Of course, we don't want to take that away from our students, so we wanted to add an additional mitigation layer so that we could keep our athletes safely in sports, as well as keeping our students in person. So we did notice that during that high community transmission, we were seeing clusters related to athletes. And sometimes those clusters were, and clusters, by clusters, I mean, multiple cases that were related to each other, that were exposed to each other in the school setting. So oftentimes, those clusters translated to the classroom setting as well. So that added mitigation level was, was very helpful in determining clusters very early on so that we could get them tested. And because they are already involved in APS surveillance testing, they automatically qualify for test to stay. So we're keeping our athletes in, in the sports, but we're also keeping them in the classroom as much as possible. And of course, this community transmission is, Matrix was based on CDC's community transmission for the community, so they currently don't have any guidance on when schools can off-ramp for masks or when schools can off-ramp for testing. It's just us taking their guidance and making the best informed decision for our schools. And that's why we are hoping to get our vaccination levels, numbers, up by doing these targeted events. And then increasing our surveillance testing so that we can, our voluntary surveillance, so we can off-ramp some of these other mitigation layers.
Thank you. And what you said about the clusters is extremely helpful information that, that's the type of information that we should be communicating to parents as the why, because that makes perfect sense, what you explained. And would address some of the questions that parents had as to why extracurricular sports? Well, because there, we noticed in the fall that there were clusters specifically related to sports. So I do think that that's very helpful to know and, and understand. And I hope that as we continue to see numbers fall, that we can be a little bit more flexible, particularly on the student side as it relates to student testing, and not wait until the level gets too moderate to, to reduce the number of obligations for student athletes. I also think that there's a natural opportunity here, in accordance with CDC guidelines, to, we'll see, by the time it's installed, I think, I'm looking at Larry, it might be, everything's working better as far as numbers. But we have filtration systems that are supposed to be installed in every classroom, and apparently, studies show that those are just as effective as mask-wearing. So if the numbers are still high, I hope the district will be flexible enough to consider that, the fact that there's air filtration in every classroom. Masks may be optional at that point as well. So fingers crossed that that continues for installation in this month, this month and next month, I believe. I also think that it's never too late to mandate the vaccine for staff. I know that we cannot do that for students, but we can do that for staff. And there's a natural opportunity coming up in the next couple of months where there will be natural turnover that happens. And it would be the perfect opportunity to require the vaccine mandate as people are coming to the district for the fall. So that when people are looking for jobs in districts that have safety protocols, they see that not only is APS doing all this amazing things as far as mitigating risks, but they're also mandating that employees have the vaccine. So I want to reiterate that it's never too late to mandate the vaccine for staff. And then, a legal question going to Tamara's comment about why certain activities and not others. There's a rhyme and reason for that, that I think needs to be explained a little bit more. And I don't know if, that should be you or you? But I do think that, I've seen the rhyme and reason, I can't think of it right now, so I'm not going to guess, but there's, I think that needs to be explained to Tamara's point.
You know, would you like to speak to that? I did note it also.
Sure. When it comes to these voluntary extracurricular activities, it's really a, we have the legal right to require this kind of testing, and it's an operational and business decision as to what the contours of that testing look like in the best interest of our kids. I would certainly not presume to speak for health professionals about what sorts of activities testing is necessary for and what they aren't. But that's how those decisions get made, based upon that constellation of factors. So, Dr. Lovett, I hate to kick it back to you, but I think I have to kick it back to you.
Well, so let me clarify it just a little bit, because, so, you know, it's required for sports. It's not required for, like, club sports. Like, there's a reason for that. One is an official APS sport. The other is not necessarily a sport that's ran through the district. Certain arts programs, or certain after-school programs require it, but then others don't. And I think the connection there is the fact that it's an APS official program versus it being even more optional than our extracurriculars already are. I think that's part of the confusion as well, is that it's hard to tell the line between what's a, an official APS sanctioned thing that requires the testing and what's not.
Yeah, so I do think that's an opportunity, again, for us, as we're doing our, our updates and our newsletter, to add some clarity to that, but it's exactly what you said. So many of those activities are not APS sanctioned activities. So we have limited it to the athletics or the performing arts, as well as the athletic opportunities. And there are also some other extracurriculars that were identified. I can't speak to those specifically, Valencia, if you want to add that. But we did limit it to those things that are sanctioned by the district. If it's helpful, we can actually, you know, add some additional language in our upcoming alert, because, again, we have that wonderful communication tool that goes out every week. We can add that piece. We try to take the feedback and the questions that we get and use it through that communication vehicle to get it out to parents and the community. So we will note that as an area to follow up with, with our fine arts partners. Our Department of Fine Arts will get them to clarify that for us as well.
I think that would be helpful. I just wanted to make sure.
Tamara?
Yeah, just real quick, that made me think about, you know, you mentioning the low level of opt-in to the testing. And I've heard from a lot of parents that one of the reasons they don't opt-in, especially now that it's twice a week, is because of the time it takes away from classes, particularly if the school is rather large, because I don't think that the vendor scales, you know, the, the testing. Because I don't think that the vendor scales, you know, the, the testing personnel, you know, for the, you know, based on population. And that, that is an issue for some parents, that their kids are missing class, so they just say no, so...
Thank you for that feedback. I will tell you that we have been working with the vendor to make the teams a lot larger. Since we did move to twice-a-week testing for students and we added on the athletics, we have had quite the surge in terms of consent, obviously. So, because we require it for one piece. And so we have worked with them to get teams a little bit larger. I'm thinking about some of our larger high schools where we have seen a challenge with that. But I will tell you, for the most part, in terms of the procedure itself, it is relatively quick. It is very quick, in fact. Most of our schools have the students ready to go. They walk them through or they line them up, and we're getting them right back into classrooms. We have received some communication as of late from our high schools in particular around the challenges associated with the testing and it taking a little bit longer. So we are working with the vendors to get more teams on the ground so that we can get that testing a lot faster in those settings. Thank you.
Jen?
So I appreciate Jason just trying to implore, like, the sense of just urgency of trying to make sure that we're doing things right on time. Because this, this testing, a lot of parents find it very invasive, especially, it seems to me, based on feedback, I receive the younger those kids are. And to your point about, it should be quick, but I'm a current APS parent, and I know my child has missed almost entire class periods through this process. So that is not okay at all. Now, hopefully, your version is the real version, and like, maybe it was just a long walk back to class. But our child's in the gifted program, so they really don't try to look for reasons to miss class because they can't afford to get behind. So we probably want to tighten up there. If we're going to demand that people are doing this for these various reasons, then we need to make sure that the system, whether it's larger teams or whatever your solution is, but I think it needs to be addressed fairly quickly.
Okay. We appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Cynthia, and then Michelle, and then we'll close out.
As a follow-on to this question, one of the common themes that we're beginning to urge in our Breakfast with the Board events with our high school students is that the, are not showing up when they say they're going to. We were at one of the high schools just last week, and the, this, this issue of it taking a long time and having to take time out from class came up. And the principal said that the testing team a good hour before we arrived and was supposed to be done before lunch started, but had still not showed up. So I, and I understand traffic, and I understand short staffing, but that may be one of the issues that's coming up at some of these schools, taking so long. Because the test itself doesn't take long. But if you don't start until an hour and a half after you're supposed to have started, then you've got to test a great many students in a short period of time, or you do have trouble with them missing class. So I'm not sure who's responsible for monitoring those and for making sure that our contract with Viral Solutions, who I think are wonderful, by the way, but making sure that, that all of our guidelines and everything that we've been following. But we may need a little more.
Okay. We appreciate that feedback as well. We have received just a few comments around the testing, testing teams getting there later. But we will work with our schools and our Viral Solutions team to get some solutions in place. So we'll do a bit more investigation. But we haven't heard that as a whole, but I am starting to hear just a few here and there. We'll work with those teams to get that rectified. Thank you for that feedback.
Fridays seem to be harder.
Friday's a challenging day.
Than early in the week.
That's...
I, that, that seems to be a recurring.
That's what I heard as well.
Absent or late on Friday.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes, I apologize, Dr. Lovett. I had to step out during your presentation, and I missed some of my colleagues' questions and remarks. So if I'm being repetitive, just say, "We already went over that," and I'll go to the next one. Could you, and I asked the superintendent about this as well, could you please share with us who's paying for the tests? Where, where are those funds coming from? Are those coming from our CARE, our CARES Act funding? Or is that coming from more of a federal level of funding that, that's not impacting the dollars that we are receiving? And I certainly understand, in my conversation with Dr. Harin, it is not coming out of our operational budget.
That is correct. Yeah, it does come out of, and thank you for your question. It does come out of our CARES Act funding. But I will tell you that we are working with the Department of Education so that we can get a shift in place, so those funds are going to come out from the federal level. We will not have a cost that's incurred for APS. So we are in the middle of getting that transition in place. That is something that's new as of this semester. I will tell you that prior to this semester, and actually for this month as well, it is something we have covered via our CARES Act funding.
Okay. Because...
Anything else? No, you answered it perfectly.
Yeah, because we talked about this.
We did, we did.
I was just, I just want to make sure it's clear for the public because there's, there's a tremendous amount of concern, or at least a lot of feedback that I'm receiving about if we're mandating testing, you know, where's, how's, where's the money coming from? Why are we paying for it, and this type of thing?
Yes.
All right, next one. So I appreciate a cut, kind of, your conversation with Jason as I came back in the room, and I apologize again for having to step out. So masks for mandatory APS events or, you know, extracurriculars, PE, drama, da-da-da. Okay, got it. Outside extracurriculars have different rules. We're not going to mandate what they do, or we don't mandate what they do. So why do some schools have, and I don't know if all schools are doing this, but why do children have to wear masks during PE?
Yes, so we did speak to that question already.
Okay. I apologize. You don't have to answer that. I'll, I'll, I'll watch the video when I get home. And is it, and is it required in outdoor play?
It is not required in outdoor play.
Okay. So that, so it's just optional for outdoor play?
That is correct. And it's been optional from the beginning of our mask-wearing protocol.
Okay. All right, last one. If a child is out for COVID, at, at any, at any level, K through 12, do they get a Zoom link for the time that they're out? And is there a limit, if they do get a Zoom link, is there a limit to how many days they can Zoom into class?
Okay. I would have to ask my, my colleagues in the school's office about that. And I'm looking back, I don't see Ms. Williams. I would have to follow up on that, in particular about this.
Yeah, I would appreciate it because it just, it just, anyways, it just seems like a lot of different practices are being done. All this information's being executed a little bit differently in different schools. And so when one school does one thing and another school does another, and then, of course, parents talk, or community talks, and then you get the feedback, and you're like, "I gotta go."
Right.
So that's, that's just my question of, of how, how does that work for children when they're missing school for more than five days? Maybe they still don't feel well enough to go back into school. Do they still have access to Zoom in until they're able to go back to school?
Okay. And I will say that schools have developed virtual learning plans. So I will follow up to see the specifics around how that, how that impacts individual students when those students are out. That is something I can take back for feedback, and we'll get an answer for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And again, my apologies.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Harin.
Yes, well, I'm just going to close out by appreciating Dr. Lovett and the team, and also the questions and the specificity that's come forward to the, from the board regarding all things related COVID and how we have worked very strategically to navigate through this, I'm going to use the term "season." I also just want to emphasize, we are encouraged as we look at the data and the trend of decline relative to community spread. But I also think it's important to take this opportunity to appreciate both the concern and patience that exists across our district, but to remind us that Atlanta Public Schools has been, in many ways, a national exemplar in this work specifically tied to our mitigation strategies. That's come face forward to me in conversations with superintendents across the country who have asked about our practices, as practices that they are trying to either adopt or better understand, and even in conversations that we've had. I didn't say it was perfect, but I think it's important to say this in a space where we use data to help drive our decisions and also to follow the science as best we could in a category that, two years ago, would have never been a part of what we discuss as it relates to our core business. I lift that because I also understand that we are all so eager to release the mask and also to be sensitive to the diverse, the diverse positions of our constituents. That being said, I do want to thank Dr. Lovett and her team, the full team, and the full collaboration of our principals, our school leaders, who are front-facing with families, quite honestly, as well as with constituents. We have come a long way in this process. I will continue to position, we know more than we did before. And I'll also state that we're also eager to be able to help take us through each tier of getting back to what we like to call "normal." Thank you, Dr. Lovett, and to your full team for your response to questions. And thank you, Board, for being right in front with the most important questions that you are hearing from constituents. And I think this concludes that presentation. And then I also believe, Madam Chair, this concludes our presentations at this time.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you again, Dr. Lovett and the team. Let's see, where are we? Sorry. Madam General Counsel, is there a reason for the Board to retreat into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Board needs to consider student discipline and legal matters.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into executive session to discuss student matters and legal, student discipline and legal matters?
That's it.
It's been promptly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown, second by Aretha Baldwin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into executive session. Thank you so much.